Okay, can't see how we can get started.
She hasn't set up.
I don't know where she's gonna sit.
Oh, she's over there.
Oh.
Okay, I'll call commission meeting to order. January eighth, two thousand twenty-five meeting. First on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Fox with the leaders in that.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Yeah, to the republic which stands one nation under God. Let's let it be Manchester's for all.
Thank you. Thank you for everybody. Got any changes to the agenda before we approve it?
Yep, so we have one change, the one o'clock line item. The people that were gonna be here, Dan and Tyler, cannot make it. And so. When approving this agenda, I would also make, I'd make a motion that we approve the agenda and move that one o'clock item to next month's meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Moving second, that the agenda be set for today, barring the one o'clock predator control discussion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Hey, Ben.
Good morning, guys.
State your name and who you.
Ben Willoughby, Ridge County Attorney.
Thank you. First up is discussion creating Ridge County Trails Board.
Yeah, I've got a, I've got a lot today. John, do you want me to talk about this or do you want to talk about it?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I, I guess I'll talk about, I reached out to you because there's a lot of trails money. Bill and I have both been to a few meetings where they want us to inventory our trails or identify trails and it feels like we're a little scattered. We do, we do have really good ideas, but we need to come up with a way to have a consistent voice while chasing a lot of this trail money. And I thought it was cool that Davis County manages so many trails and you guys have some experience as far as maintaining and administering those trails, so.
Yeah, so this would be, the idea here is to create an advisory board. And so first off, let me just tell you some of the research I did at John's request. I drew, there's a state trail committee and they're set out by ordinance and so, or not by state statute. And so I looked to them. And then Farmington, where I live, has something like three hundred miles of trails that's actively managed and they have a really robust and active trail committee that does the same thing that John had mentioned was hope, they're hoping here they, they seek public funds, grants, and even public donations. Sometimes they can be appointed or told like we have from the commissioner and maybe they'll say like we have X number of dollars. Help us find the best way to use that. They create a current map that inventories the status of all of your trails. So you can see what you've got right now. And then they, they come up with what's called a master trail plan. That ultimately, all of this is advisory, so all of the decisions, all the checks are signed. The budget is approved and the master plan is approved by this board. But they would come up with as an advisory board, what would be kind of the, the master plan of the trail network that we would like to have. And then as money and opportunities arise, we can, you know, they'll, they'll recommend taking, you know, little bites at that plan as money and opportunity allows. And could also oversee construction maintenance, recommend any legislation for use of trails that would come back to this board for approval. Somebody just kind of walk you through the ordinance that, and this is just a rough stab. It's is in line on the major things with what Farmington City is doing. So if you look at section three, it's an advisory board under the direction of this board. And their, their duties are A, to inventory and map current trails. Then map and identify proposed trails, to create a trails master plan for approval by this board. B, periodically review the trails master plan for any appropriate changes or opportunities to build. C, recommend projects, legislation, policies, funding allocations, and other measures to best develop and maintain the trail system contained in the trail master plan. D, oversee any construction maintenance or activities as directed by the Board of County Commissioners. E, actively seek opportunities for government grants or private donations that would help advance the construction of the trails master plan. The county trails board will have the authority to apply for and manage grants obtained. The thought there is that, once we get a grant, they always want a grant manager, somebody that does the reporting paperwork and things. And it seems like that would be something that this board might want to delegate away so that they're doing it rather than you. F, perform any other function for the development and maintenance of the trail system as directed by the Board of County Commissioners. We have some definitions here. One of trails master plan means a map of current trails and a design for future trail network that would best serve the people of Ridge County. We set a quorum which requires at least three members to be present in person or by electronic device. And then trail is defined using the same definition the state of Utah uses. Including cross-country skiing, horseback riding, running, walking, or any combination thereof. Section five, the composition would be members appointed by this board, consists of up to five members and may include, if this board chooses to include a county commissioner, but that wouldn't be required. C, the term of appointment shall be two years, but can be staggered to create the initial board. So maybe you would appoint three people for two years and two for one year or, or three years or something to stagger that. D, board members can be removed at any time with or without cause by this board. Vacancies can be filled at any time. If somebody moves completely out of the county, they'll be considered to a vacated board. Farmington City requires you to have your primary residence, but it seemed like this board, just for flexibility, may want to have the, the option to appoint someone who only has a secondary home here. F, it's voluntary membership unless otherwise specified by the board, they serve without pay. Six. This asks them to elect a chairperson whose role is to direct and lead the activities of the board. All their decisions would be by approval of the majority vote. It requires them to act in public meetings with a quorum present. D, since they are a government body, they would have to comply with the Open and Public Meetings Act. They shall meet as often as they determine necessary, but at least three times a year unless otherwise directed by this board. And then seven requires them once a year or as deemed necessary by this board to report to the Board of County Commissioners on the activities of the committee. So I tried to draft it to, to give maximum flexibility, good direction to the board and what they should do and to keep it simple. It's on today just for discussion and consideration. Also, I'll turn it up back to you.
That looks really good, John. And Ben, I think John and I have had some discussions. There's several opportunities out there. Pertain trails for, for funding and different for the construction as well as ethics meetings and those type of things, so. I think as we review it, I think I'd make a motion that we put it on the agenda for February, maybe for a public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, moving second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So I had two things I noticed. Sorry for not calling you back sooner.
No problem.
But the trail board will have the authority to apply for and manage grants obtained. I would like them to have the authority to apply for them, but I don't know if I want them to manage the funds, if that makes sense. I would like the county commission to, to, you know, they get the funds and they need to come ask us to spend them, you know, or at least have us approve it. Because I'm not sure, I, I don't know, I'm not sure that there's gonna be.
Yeah, that was my intention is they don't have their own budget.
Okay.
I think what I was trying to write was that there's always like a grant manager who's the person that like reports and does the.
So we could designate them as the manager.
Yeah, so probably need to clarify.
Do you understand, you get what I'm saying? Like, I don't want a board to start spending money.
The money should all be, every check should be approved by this board. I will rewrite paragraph E to make that clear. Are you still okay though with them being like the grant?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think that would be how.
It's kind of burdensome to have a grant sometimes.
Yeah.
They should be the ones doing the grants.
Yeah, yeah. I just don't want a group of three spending money with, you know, like we're gone or, you know, you get, I.
Yeah. So I'll just clarify in there that they're managing it in the technical sense, do all the reporting.
Yeah.
Make sure we're in compliance with the grant, but that when it comes to approval of funds, all approval would be with the consent.
And maybe that's all it is, is just manage in your definitions, you could define what manage means.
Yeah.
And then the second cha- change is on trails, includes a path used for walking, running, horseback riding. I think that looks good. I think we probably need to add UTVs, ATV trails as well. That's a lot of what, what we're trying to develop.
And part of that would be, you know, they would come up with ideas as an advisory for policies, like on this trail, we think we should allow ATVs.
Yeah.
And on this one, we shouldn't.
And there are some specific spots where, where like a right of way needs to connect to a trail where I feel like we've all decided, yes, we need to do that, but then we get focused on other stuff. So this, this, this committee would help solve that problem.
And then the term you want is UTV?
I, I don't know if they offer a vehicle, no. I don't know what they got.
Like a.
OHB, yeah. Off-highway vehicle.
OHB.
They have some, OHBs or UTVs or.
Yeah.
Million names.
Okay.
Highways.
Yeah, specifically not cars, you know, trucks.
I bet the state has a definition they're using for that.
Yeah.
We probably also maybe want to add like e-bikes, scooters, things like that. I mean, not every trail will have everything, but.
But I think if, in the scope of what the committee's, you know, the trail board's trying to do, it's more bad those things.
Okay.
Those are the two things I noticed.
Are you happy with the five members?
I think so.
And you'll report to this body?
Like how simple it is, I think it, I think it'll work good.
I'll send out a draft, I'll advance it out and get it noticed up for public hearing.
Okay. Which County Building Permit Ordinance.
Okay. Let's see. Building permit works. Okay, so we had a public hearing last month, you remember? And we the board wanted it back on, not for public hearing, but just for, for the consideration and signing. The idea that was brought up last month was having a tiered structure rather than a straight two thousand dollar refundable deposit. When you get a building permit, but to have it tiered based on the value of the project and. So the change to that, you guys have the email of, or the proposed new draft?
Yes.
Do you have that sent?
Somewhere.
Should look like this.
That was it.
It's not in the packet?
I could run a quick copy. Let me just step out and make a few quick copies, sir.
If I did, it would have been right after the, it would have been before the interlocal agreement and I think that's the first thing I need to talk about.
So what are we doing? It's a short-term rule. Uh, no.
Building, probably building, yeah.
I think the only thing we changed was adding the tiered deposit amount for projects.
Yeah.
Forgot to get full, summer's page one.
Thank you.
Page. Okay, so the my notes from last time, if you'll turn to section four. This contains all, the only changes that were made. We wanted to clarify under subsection A that prior to a building permit being issued and that here we're talking about for construction or renovation of a residence or other building rather than smaller projects. And so here I just added for the construction renovation of a building or residence or any portion of a building residence. In subsection B, rather than being two thousand across the board, we go off the cost of the project. The construction costs. And we have it under a hundred thousand dollars. The deposit is five hundred dollars. For one hundred to two hundred thousand, it's a thousand and over two hundred thousand, it'd be a two thousand dollar deposit, all of them refundable. And I believe that is all of the changes that were made for hearing last night.
Is that the copy of what the ordinance is actually gonna look like?
Yes, I got a clean copy here.
Keep the number.
How does that look in writing?
I think that accomplishes what our concerns were.
Okay.
And, you know, that. I think that's what we wanted to do was try to, to create a tiered level, so. Um, I think that looks good from what our discussion was.
I had Tyler, the building inspector, look at it and he didn't have any concerns.
Yeah, I like it. Did we already have a public hearing?
We had a public hearing this month.
So can we approve this?
You can approve it today if you want.
Are you guys good?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we, on ordinance zero two five dash three Ridge County ordinance for building permits and certificate of occupancy that we approved these changes. Updated ordinance.
Second.
Okay, got a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Consideration of interlocal agreement to renew Bear River Association of Governments. Welcome, Lucas, glad you're here. We have a whole list of questions. No.
Lucas is, have you met Lucas?
No.
He's the brag director. Yeah, come on, come on up. Lucas, this is Ben.
Nice to meet you. You're the director of Brad?
I am.
Okay, great. Have you been attending all of the three commission meetings?
Not all of them, but where I can, yeah.
Usually somebody's here, if, if he's not here.
I'm sure Sean and others, yeah, I'll try to have staff available.
Okay. Well, Cash and Box Elder are also considering it. Do you know if they've signed yet?
Um, I think Box Elder has still some things they're working on. Cash, I believe, drafted, well, Cash drafted the initial agreement, so they're good with where it's at, the box, so they're still working on it.
Okay. All right. So this was on last month for discussion and it's on today just for discussion and signing of the resolution if you want to approve it today. We don't need a public hearing because we want to need a resolution.
So maybe Lucas, like we say, Box Elder was making some changes.
So there was discussion that there's not a local agreement that addresses how an executive director would be removed. There was a problem. So that's something that they thought was perhaps a challenge and that, so they wanted to discuss whether or not there was something that didn't happen there. So that's the specific area they kind of had, you know. I don't take that personally.
And I think from the that that was several weeks ago and then the three county attorneys worked that out.
So did they?
So I think that this
Okay.
Has what the agreements that we expect them to agree to.
The past director was there for fifty years.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one years, so.
The entirety of the last agreement.
So Lucas is fairly new.
So you say you worked it out. Did you add some language, Ben?
Let's see, I think it said that it would just be an at-will appointment.
That's in the Box Elder one.
So.
See if I can find that.
Well, so in, in I, it says executive director, the position of executive director is an at-will position of every board shall appoint executive director and may terminate the executive director for any reason that is not contrary, that is not contrary to the law.
Yeah.
The governing board shall vote on whether to terminate the executive director when the issue is brought before them. The chair and vice-chair shall ensure, ensure that the issue of termination is addressed by the board if anyone or board members request the board consider terminating the director.
Yeah. That was the resolution for that.
Okay, I think that. Yeah.
And I think that that, the idea was just to keep it how it's always been.
Right.
And the old, the old interlocal was silent on that, which meant that it would be at-will. So here we're just being explicit about it.
No, it makes perfect sense and it's no issue.
So in my discussions with the other county attorneys, all of us believed that this was the resolution or this was the agreement that each county would be okay with.
So as I've read through it, and, and I guess I, you forwarded it to us, Ben, so I, unless there's any changes from the one you forwarded.
There haven't been any changes.
I would, I would move that we approve the interlocal agreement with the Bear River Association of Governments.
A second.
Okay, motion to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by the same side, motion carries.
Okay, so here's the resolution that takes care of that. Okay.
Lucas, I'm sorry, what was your last name?
Martin. I know you're Martin, yeah, yeah.
And do you have Lucas's email? You'll just want a copy of this, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, could you do that?
Okay. And so that resolution authorizes someone to sign this agreement. That's you soon. Uh, yeah.
Why don't you, do you want to take this and then when all of them are signed, I get a copy of the whole thing or? Or just, should I just have a copy of, you tell me what to do.
I will probably have you keep that and just email me a copy. And then we probably will have different signature pages.
Right, I'll, so just email this to you.
Yeah, if you'll sign as a testing that at the bottom there. Okay, you're good for fifty more years. Only John had to worry about this.
I'll be a robot by then. Incorporating some AI system.
Fifty years.
That's quite a feat to create an agreement that stands fifty years without amendment.
Okay.
Okay. The next thing is a, a county local option sales tax to fund public safety purposes. Uh, this one I emailed to everybody. Let's see. Do you guys have copies in front of you?
Should have, if we find it.
Maybe you're just ahead of it.
I just have the one copy here, but I can, do you mind making three copies there?
No, we got them, we got them, I'll help you. It's gonna be way past this.
Way back.
Did you create these packets? That's awesome, thanks.
Somebody's.
Next one.
It's right after the interlocal agreement? Your, your head's right there.
What are you driving, Lucas?
What am I driving? Yeah.
This is a cash counting mess.
Yeah, good man.
So that's the interlocal, right? Yeah, that's it, okay.
Are you, uh, are you just going back to your office? Will you be seeing Sean? Yeah, he I, I may have something to send back over to him.
That's great.
Okay, we gotta pull down.
Okay, so, um, section fifty nine dash twelve dash twenty two sixteen allows counties to opt to impose, um, a sales tax of up to point three percent uh, as on all sales tax transactions within cities um, and towns within the county, so it's countywide. Um, if you are a sixth tier county like we are, um, you can do that by simple resolution. Daggett County and Sevier County recently did it, um, and I had, uh, the Sevier County attorney send me a copy of their resolution. And, uh, it sounds like they've just done it recently and it hasn't yet taken effect, but I did get a copy of their resolution to draw off. If enacted, the, uh, county can use the funds for, uh, public safety purposes. And we can use it for everything set out in fifty nine twelve dash twenty two um, twelve point two, which would be like, um, road development, sidewalks, curbs, signs, lighting, streets, alleys, airports, um, transportation facilities, public transit, um, or to service the debt on bonds related to those projects. Uh, but the county has to, in its resolution, uh, specify exactly how the funds will be used, like what percentage will go to each of those things. You can change it anytime by further resolution, so if you do uh, point three percent to public safety today, and then you decided later you wanted a little bit for something else, you can do that by resolution. Um, so this is just a simple resolution, um, it's very similar to what Sevier did. And, um, let me just walk you through it. So the wherethes were authorized under that section. The commission finds an ongoing and special need to better fund public safety in the county. Um, and that the county finds it the best interest of the residents of Ridge County. Go to the thereforers, uh, number one, the commission approves the imposition of a three tenths of one percent uh, sales tax and use tax within Ridge County. The county option sales tax will apply to all transactions described um, under fifty nine twelve one oh three, which is the section that lays out what is subject to sales tax. Uh, within the county, including with all cities, within other cities and towns in the county. Uh, section two, um, one hundred percent of these sales and use tax revenues will be allocated to fund public safety purposes. Um, and three, the intention of the county commission is for this resolution to be sent to the Utah State Tax Commission to have the tax commission apply this tax as soon as allowed by law. And, um, there's a lag. We have to have it to the sales tax commission.
It won't be, it won't be, uh, active until the second quarter.
Yeah, we have to get it, um, ninety days after they receive our notice. And the first day of the quarter, so if we hurry, maybe second quarter.
Yeah.
Maybe third quarter. But if we approve it, I'll get it to them today. And um, are there any questions about?
I don't have a single question, you guys?
No.
Okay, I'll move that we approve the resolution for Ridge County to authorize the point three percent, uh, sales tax for use of public safety.
Moving second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
So here's a clean copy of the resolution. And then I think I'll just take a physical copy with me today. So I can get it to the commission, to the tax commissioner. You can keep the original, but I'll just take a physical copy. Okay.
Resolution to amend personal or personnel policy.
Okay, so we're back again, uh, last month we discussed some ways to address this. Here's a copy of that. Okay, to, um, to do what we proposed last month, uh, we would just need to amend two policies. Uh, one is personnel policy three dash two hundred, which is overtime and comp time. And the other is policy four dash one hundred, which is paid holidays. And so let's start, oh, thank you so much. Let's start with the, uh, policy three dash two hundred, which you should have in front of you. Alright, so if you go to section three, the first thing this does, you go to section three, subpart C. Except as other authorized, except as otherwise provided in this policy, any non-exempt employee who works in excess of forty hours in a week will be paid uh, one and a half times their regular rate of pay for each hour actually worked in excess of forty, so overtime is a time and a half. Uh, this removes, um, the provision that allowed that to be also converted instead to comp time at a one and a half rate. So, uh, there really is no more comp time. If you're over forty hours as a non-exempt employee, you're just gonna be paid out your overtime at one and a half rate. By amending paragraph C, uh, comp time just ceases to exist in the county. If we go to section D, uh, holiday, vacation, sick leave and comp time used, or other paid leaves such as jury duty, funeral leave and administrative leave will not be counted as time worked when calculating the number of hours worked for overtime purposes. Uh, that's the same, E uh, is the same, is the pol- county's policy to discourage the use of overtime and to keep overtime to the bare minimum commensurate with the county's best interests. Supervisors and department heads should organize their department workloads to minimize overtime. Uh, F is the same. All overtime worked must be specifically assigned and approved in advance by an employee supervisor or department head, the only exception allowed is for sheriff's deputies and public safety employees in emergency situations where overtime is unavoidable and supervisors cannot be reasonably contacted prior to approval. Um, section four.
Real quick though, but that still in those emergency situations requires that that overtime be authorized after the fact, right? Good, I think the last line says in case of overtime in those situations when like Sheriff Stacy's gone and, and we dive into that overtime, we would still.
He should okay it when he gets back.
Yeah, he still needs to okay it.
Uh, he has overtime, he has, he has to authorize all time cards.
Okay.
Um, but like, let's say you're already at forty hours and there's an emergency, you know, shooting or something and it's all hands on deck, everybody's just gonna come work because public safety requires it. It wouldn't be that, uh, Dale would then go back and refuse to pay you for that, because you are gonna get paid overtime if it was overtime. He does have supervisory powers over the time cards at the end and, um, would have the authority to then adjust the schedule as necessary, you know, maybe you have to come out on a Thursday night, but maybe, you know, Saturday you can be set home early or something, the, the thing is all, that's all true. But, um, in, in that limited exception for law enforcement with emergency situations, it, it doesn't require any, uh, preapproval. But we could write however the three of you want it written, but that's how it's written right now.
At this point though, anybody that has overtime, the sheriff authorizes that overtime and signs that how many hours it is, um, is approved for overtime pay separate from a time sheet.
Th- this requires that overtime outside of an emergency, it's all preapproved. It's specifically, uh, it's specifically authorized. Is that the question?
No, at, as the, at the present, any overtime that is being paid, the sheriff authorizes that after the fact. How are we gonna change that?
Sounds like we don't have to, it sounds like the, the, it, the, the policy is already that it's supposed to be authorized before they're doing it. As the schedule is set.
Well, but it, we're just talking about, okay, so like, you know, it's a Sunday night and things are going and you know, we go into overtime, at that point in time, every time that overtime was paid, the sheriff has to authorize the payment of that overtime.
Yeah, so you're asking the same question that, that I was asking, because I was confused too.
Yes, and, and at this point right now, he does, he, he signs.
He, I think that's under policy three dash one hundred, which is the payroll policy, that just states that, um, uh, each time sheet must be signed by the employee and countersigned by the supervisor department head. Approving that time sheet.
Right.
That's still true.
Alright.
Yeah. So flip to page two here, section four. These are the changes that you'll see that were highlighted, um. Section four was our old comp time statute and it allowed with the consent of the supervisor and consent of the employee for an employee to receive one point five hours for each overtime hour worked in lieu of uh, overtime pay. So this just replaces that and says the county does not offer compens- compensatory time in lieu of overtime pay. And then, um, if we go to B, compensatory time earned before the adoption of this amended policy, this addresses what to do with that, um. The old policy stated that comp time had to be used within four months or it was forfeited. And this just clarifies that any comp time used before this new policy uh, is still available for those four months. Um, unless specifically approved by the board of county commissioners. And so if this policy is changed in four months, there should be no more comp time on the books. And no more comp time ever put back on the books, because it's all gonna be overtime pay. Any questions about that proposal?
So as the four months go, it'll go away. Because they will use it.
And that was under the old policy, all comp time expired within four months, so.
I think it's all gone away now, have we not paid out all our comp time?
So anything that's existing at this point should be just be four months and that will be forfeited.
Then it'll be gone.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I think I, we, we should make sure that they get it, you know, uh, so we just four months from now, there won't be any, but we need to make sure that everybody gets their comp time before that.
Everybody needs to know that it's gonna be lost if they don't use it.
So in other words, they have to take it or use it, like how, how are we gonna pay them? The comp hours.
I think they're supposed to take time, I don't know, I don't know.
Take days off, right?
They're supposed to.
Yeah.
How much comp time do you think is still on your books?
Think, I think one bit and still.
We did pay, we did pay out the deputies, I think, uh, and the comp time's been maxed at thirty with dispatch, so.
They need to know that it's.
I know they've been earning again with the start of the new year, so we'll probably maybe less than a hundred hours.
Okay.
But we don't want them to come in and say, I didn't know about all this, and we need to get them paid out, paid.
So any, any amendments this policy will, uh, have sent out to each of the department heads with, I'll send it out with instructions to provide a physical copy to each employee so that they know that there's been a change. So the next thing, if you'll, uh, do you have the proposed amendment to four dash one hundred? This is the, uh, paid holidays. Okay, so here, again, the concern was, uh, what's the interaction between overtime, comp time and holidays? And so this just, uh, uh, tried to enact what the commission, uh, discussed last month. Section three. Any non-exempt employee required to work on one of the above holidays uh, will be given a net, uh, let's see, will and it will now read receive their regular holiday pay as if they did not work. And also be paid their regular rate for any hours actually worked, resulting in double pay for any hours worked on a holiday. If the holiday hours worked or also overtime hours, the employee will receive their regular holiday pay as if they did not work. And also be paid their regular overtime rate for any hours actually worked, resulting in two and a half times pay for the hours uh, worked on a holiday. And then if you look at subsection D, supervisors and department heads, this is all new language, should avoid having overtime employees work holidays whenever possible, except as needed to meet the county's interests. Clarifying that, uh, if a, if an employee is allowed to work overtime on a holiday, it should be because the county needs it to happen and not because the employee uh, is just hoping for that two and a half time payday. And that's it, um, so just really two changes, we're a hundred percent eliminating comp time and then two we're specifying the tier of everyone who gets paid a holiday. If you work it, you get that plus whatever you worked, and if it's overtime, you get that, that's your overtime pay. And, uh, any questions or concerns with the language that was put down there?
No. Clarify stuff.
Move we approve the, uh, the policy amendments to overtime. Yeah.
While we're, while we've got the paid holiday thing there. Um, did you guys go back and check for Friday last month? Did you take back Fair Friday and give us back Columbus Day?
On the list of paid holidays?
We should have the Juneteenth.
Oh yeah, we have Fair Friday on there. And that's off right now, right?
We went back to Columbus Day.
Yeah, so can we just do that motion at the same time?
Um.
It, I just was wanting to clarify that while this policy was being, you were looking at it anyway.
I can uh. Come back next month with a resolution and and a copy of amended.
Okay.
Four dash one hundred. Well, actually.
We can include it on the.
Yeah, we can do it right now, just by interlineation if you want.
Yeah.
So I have a clean copy right here.
So did you make a motion?
I did, yeah, and I would always include in that motion that uh, Fair Friday uh, be replaced with Columbus Day.
Okay, so let's see, uh, right now, we we are doing Juneteenth.
Yeah.
Uh, we do have Fair Friday in August. And we're and we're tak- so we're taking Fair Friday off.
Hmm.
Well, we're removing Fair Friday and putting it and giving the holiday back in Columbus Day.
Okay. What month is Columbus Day in?
We're gonna observe Columbus Day and not Fair Friday.
It's in October every month?
You know, I don't know, I don't ever celebrate it.
It's October, okay.
Okay, we got a second.
I'll second that.
Alright, we got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, motion carries.
Okay.
Columbus Day is the first.
Feel about that?
Columbus Day is always usually the uh, second to, second Monday of each month.
Okay, so first, here's the resolution. That changes those two policies, which would now include the interlineation for holidays. If you want to execute that. In here, Sam. Sam, date that one.
Oh, by the way, the um, the policies don't look like the. So signing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just drew off the old one and I, I catch that change. Can I just fix it by interlineation here?
Let me see, inter.
Interlineation. Five dollar word.
Five dollar word, so when you use that in attorney gets a charge five dollars.
You guys get charged five dollars, I've used it, I've used it three times today.
Fifteen bucks you've been today.
One more right there. I'm sorry, I know, I just, it was the old copy.
I saw it and was concerned and didn't.
So when you sign, would you mind just correcting that?
Sure will.
And then here's the. Let's see, you have the.
The resol-
The resolution already?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Alright, have a motion to. The public hearing?
No, because it's not eleven o'clock yet.
Oh, you got three minutes?
Let's take it five minutes.
Okay. Good idea.
We need some insulation on the volume, which, have you been down there? Ah, so it's just, it's just, I mean. We're this far between the coast, it's up, uh. Went down, it's done up there, having insulated. Yeah, yeah, between the rafters.
It's not very long.
Good, how are you? Good.
This is a relic.
Oh my gosh, that's it?
But you can't have it because I'm taking it with me. Um, I'm gonna give you a, I forgot, I didn't get you a copy of like latest and greatest uh, order list, but that was what I had to do and work with. And that's the one that's signed, so.
Perfect, okay. But you need this today?
Uh, you can give it to the historical side, society if you need to. I just brought it so you could look at it.
Can I take it with me and I'll make myself a copy? Okay, and the next time I see you, I'll give it back.
Yeah, that's fine, and then I'll send you a electronic, I'll view the way.
That's the most recent.
And I'll, why would you need that if you have the latest and greatest?
I just wanna have every.
Okay, best of luck.
This is a short cord. You can use this, if you want pretty much.
Seven degrees outside today.
Yeah, that Canadian air is kinda cold, they say. It's more normalish. That's more normalish.
Yeah.
Normalish is my word, different than Ben's. We're gonna make a committee. I think, but the committee's gonna work for funds and then kind of spearhead projects.
Somebody around the trip.
Yeah.
Did you get it all, Tom? Yeah.
We can make some. It's like about fifteen.
Is that what you just said?
Yeah.
Because I just went one, two, three, four. Got quite a few people online to do, is it? Pretty good amount. So much to say. Major.
Hey. This is a big meeting.
Hey, you're held up. When you start messing with people's water. You good? Okay, I'll call commission meeting back to order, uh. We have a motion to go into public hearing.
So move.
Second. Moving second, we go into public hearing about, uh. Ordinance for protection on canals, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, uh, before we start in here, I'd like to give a little history of what's kind of brought this to to light and, uh. Uh, we can maybe even to refer to Bill. He was involved a little more and canal over in Garden City that. Uh, there was some building going on by it and that lost the the integrity of the bank and washed out and. Uh, many of the people over there were several years without any water to irrigate with because of it. So we're, we're trying to get around to. Some construction and building which may compromise the bank of a canal to, uh. Put us all in hot water for not getting our crops irrigated, do you have any more to say about the history of that?
No, um, so the the ordinance is basically to bring the canal. Companies into the discussion. Um, if there's going to be any development within. Uh, around, I believe we've specified a hundred and ten feet, is that right? Is that what we did?
A hundred feet.
An, a hundred feet, so some, some canals have wider easements than others, but. To give a buffer zone around that canal, if someone is going to do any excavation. That the canal company, someone, a representative of the canal company as well as. From the county needs to, uh, basically the engineer needs to look and make sure that any, this excavation. Um, has at least the canal companies have been notified that there's going to be some excavation. And if, is there going to be any impact to the integrity of the canal? Banks or the the runoff or anything related to the canal. So this isn't, this isn't to try to put any burdens on any canals, it's try to bring. The canal companies into the discussion without, before any development takes place. That's, that's the target of the ordinance, is to protect the canal companies. So with that, I know there's been a lot of questions, um, a lot of people have called and, uh. Uh, wanted to know what the ramifications are, so, um. As a public hearing, if you have any questions, this is a time to ask and, uh, we'll try to clarify. Um, what, what the ordinance is, what the impact the ordinance will have.
And for those that don't know, this is, uh, Ben Willoughby, he's our county attorney. And Tyler Stewart's here representing our engineer, so any questions? We got the answers. Mark.
So what, any excavation? Everything that I can fix is within a hundred feet of the canal because that's my point of the. Let's trump it out, it's just need to be cleaned right there. So what's the definition of maintenance versus excavation? Or if you want, like my pump heads on the, for pit, it's on. But then fifty feet of the canal where that gravel pit is. And then second, if the county engineer has to come look or who matter. And that everywhere else that comes with about seven hundred dollar bill.
Well, I think, I think that, I think the issue is, is that. Is anything you're gonna do, um, going to impact the integrity of the banks of the canal?
Well, you're not gonna replace the head gate.
Well, but we're not talking about replacing a head gate, we're talking about. The reconstruction underneath, you know, a- a- anything that's gonna impact that the integrity, the bank of the canal. You're, you're technically not to, to replace a head gate until you notify the canal company anyway. Well.
Saying that excavation is better for us.
So, well, so if you're gonna, if you're gonna do a development out there. You're gonna come forward with a plat that's gonna say, this is what I'm doing as a development. And is that development going to impact any part of the, the canal system? What, what do you mean?
Well, like in Idaho, I know we have to go with them if there's canal through it up, I think they have a signature on the.
But, but in, we don't, that, that's, we will not. We, we will now, that's the thing, the ordinance is bringing the canal company into the. Into the, the, the whole scheme of things, yeah.
Do you mind if I read the definitions of that?
Yeah.
Can I just make a quick?
Yeah, go ahead, Brad.
So I'm Brad Davis, I'm the president of Hodges Canal. And I kind of ramrodded this because of what happened over in Garden City. My standpoint, and the commissioners may disagree with this. I brought this forward as a way to keep developers from excavating under a canal bank, especially where it's up on a gray. And destabilizing the canal bank. If you as the chair owner in the canal company. Or you as an official in the canal company, want to maintain your canal, in my opinion, this ordinance has no effect on. We're only trying to make sure that we don't have another blowout. Like we had in Garden City and ended up having to spend half a million dollars to fix a problem that someone else created.
I follow you, it could be a lot of, at least concerns, I'm on both sides of this and certain. Is, is it can't, so it, it doesn't matter, the way we worry about it in Randolph, if it's just the Garden City issue.
Well, because we, it's not just a Garden City issue. Only ha- only part of that canal out is over there and it has to be, it's a county ordinance because a good share of the Swan Creek Canal. Is, is out into the county, it leaves Garden City and goes out into the county.
Our biggest problem now is development in the county portion, Garden City's done. All, all the development we're gonna have in the Garden City limits by and large with one or two big plats. Is done, what we're worried about for the future is. From Kimball Lane, so if you know that place, from Kimball Lane South, which is almost all in the.
Do you want that definition, Brad?
If, I think, if this is the case, like he says, it needs to be more different in your, in your ordinance. We need to have in there that anywhere down the canal by the canal company or the landowner with water rights in a ditch, it, it needs to be explained in this ordinance. So we're not caught with their backs down somewhere else.
So you mean like, uh, ma- maintenance?
Maintenance of the canal, maintenance of a head gate. And we brought up about a pump house being set, you know, somewhere along the canal. Those kind of things need to be, need to be put into this ordinance instead of just a broad term of, you know, construction.
Okay, go ahead, Ben, read that if you want.
So the proposed definition right now, just for everyone's benefits, is construction means any project where excavation occurs. Construction includes but is not limited to digging holes for foundations, pools, or trampolines. Construction includes any activity that changes the slope of the ground uh, within the protective strip, so within that hundred feet from the center line. Construction does not include small projects such as setting fence posts, planting trees, or other similar activities where only a small amount of earth is removed and then replaced.
I concur with J R, I think we could put in there exception of maintenance or specify that maintenance doesn't end clear.
I, I would tend to agree with that, I think that's a smart thing just to make it crystal clear that the canal companies maintain the right to maintain their own canal without this ordinance competing.
Yeah. Joseph.
I guess, uh, I just wanted to make sure like, cleaning, cleaning, coming down, bringing people in, just.
Yeah, that's maintenance.
So who could be authorized? Like, does the canal company have to have a list of people in? Could make those changes to their canal or work within their, anyway, work with that protective strip? It's the thought there, just like.
For reconstruction?
For maintenance.
Oh, maintenance.
Well, I think the canal, the canal companies have always oversaw the maintenance of their canals and I don't.
Usually individual landowners will do a lot of that, I'm certain.
Well, well, they will, but, but anytime there's any, any maintenance in the canal, whether it's cleaning canal or replacing the head gate, the canal companies bylaws, most of them, say that the canal company needs to be or the board of directors needs to be notified that there's gonna be something taking place in the canal. And that has to be approved by, y- y- you know, the, the board of directors, I guess, so to speak. Um, the problem is, what's happened is, is there's been situations going on and, and it's all in the north end of the county and we understand that, but their problem is, is those canals come out into the county and so in order to protect the part that's in the county, we had to do a county ordinance and it's not. So we, we did it, I don't think it's gonna affect anything we're doing here at all over here unless somebody does a development um, where the bank is really high and then they wanna put their development right against the bank. And then when the, the, the bank subs and it gets in their basement or it causes issues, you know, we need to be able to, as the canal companies, we need to be able to say, you can't put that house there right next to the bank of the canal. Because you know as well as I do, you know, anytime it subs and all of a sudden it's the canal comp, the canal's fault and you gotta stop the subbing, well, you know, and, and we've got that problem going on now, I mean, this summer has been horrific in the, in the canals over there because we haven't had water in them for three years. Put water in them and then we couldn't wa- get the water to run down because it all subbed outside of the bank. And now it's all of a sudden the canal company's responsibility because now there's water running down the streets and it's, it's an issue and I, I, I don't know, we're just trying to get ahead of this, not, not harm you in any way as canal companies or impact anything that you're doing as far as maintenance go. But we, we need to be able to protect the right to get the water down without having outside influences cause issues.
That's probably just curious, like in the county, bigger ordinances, like for, if somebody were to build a home, even if, even if it's slightly outside of that buffer zone, but the canal's above it and it causes, you know, it's a typical low area where the canal subs or something, is there anything to protect the canal company or protect them from, to say, don't build here because it's a bad spot to build, it's a flood plain or anything like that? So the canal company doesn't have a liability down the road like you're talking about?
No, but you, the planning and zoning would make them enter into an agreement or basically, they would be, they would have to sign off on the fact that they realize where they're building is in a low area and it's, could be a flood plain, could be sub, but, and they, they will not hold the canal company responsible. And that's basically where it'd be, yeah?
I guess the only thing I got, this kinda goes along with what G R drug is, we might all be good with the language we hear today. Looks like ahead fifteen, twenty years, I'm gonna be, probably be in here. Let, let's just make sure the language isn't gonna be something that comes back and bites us in ten or fifteen years when things change and we know things will change. So, it's mostly to do with what G R says, you know, on the, on the maintenance and and this and that, that it doesn't get so sticky down the road that we can't even go fix a head gate without getting county, county here. But that's all, I'm just looking ahead.
Yeah.
Not necessarily today, but ahead.
I agree. Well, and I think we need to have the word maintenance in there, canal maintenance. A- and, you know, head gate replacement or maintenance, however we wanna do that, so that the canal company still maintains anything that takes, takes place within the canal easement.
Yeah.
I, I got a question, sorry. So, uh, then, uh, like with the, uh, um, your, like, I'm trying to, uh, um, you know, this is about educating, you know, making sure that, you know, developers don't come in and ruin the integrity of the canal. But at the same time, you know, let's, again, like this gentleman was saying, you know, in foreshadowing, you know, let's not, I think we're all trying to say, let's not assume that our rights, just because they've been there the whole time, as everyone knows them, you know, of what we can do on the canal, what we can't do on the canal. You know, if we're gonna say, hey, you builder, you have to do this, then, you know, I, I think it really needs to be defined of what it is we can do in the ordinance without asking. You know, and, and not assuming anything like, you can, you can go and put your, you know, you can redo your head gates. You can put in your, your pivot pumps, you know, uh, you can go in and clean and maintain and you can drive on either side of the ditch, you know, all the way across. I mean, not that it's, you know, some of them are actual easements anyway, but it's, you know, I mean, but it's been assumed for years that you can, you know, access your canal wherever it is. And, uh, you know, with people coming in and private property owners thinking that because they own the land, they own the ditch too, you know, and, uh, you know, there's things that we need to put in, clearly put in here what they can't do. We should clearly put in what we can do.
So. You had some.
Yeah, I'm in the same line, just clear definitions on that and then because there's never been any disagreements about water and fields. What's the end all answer, are we sitting in a commission meeting over disagree, like, if there is disagreement, it becomes a commission meeting and this is where it's brought up, it's the canal company, have the last say. You know, there's a process, just like what we're dealing with in Meadow though, right, it may have been on your guys' table, which you didn't know. So how, how is that, you know, that needs to be in the ordinance. Because really it ain't gonna be it all about, so it's gonna be the next round and there, there's disagreements on ditches all the time, usually the guy in the next row is listening.
Well, that and there's a thousand people against a hundred of us and they're coming in by the thousands.
Yeah. To you.
Uh, I get, I got a couple of questions, first one's probably for Ben. Doesn't the state already have a state statute? If any subdivision council in, in a hundred feet of a canal, that they have to give the permission? The canal company has to sign off on that.
Uh, I don't believe so.
I think that.
Who would have fixed your guys'?
I, I think we should look it up as a county. I mean, I think double, you know, we got plenty of laws on the book, we don't need that more than we need.
Must not have or else that problem in Garden City wouldn't happen.
Garden City's problems shouldn't have happened anyway, cause they had an engineer on the project, you know? Even having an engineer didn't solve it. So, even if we have the rules on the book, that doesn't mean nothing bad's not gonna happen. Then second.
Just make the counter argument that the engineer made a recommendation that the developer chose to ignore.
Well, yeah.
That's a big problem, yeah. Sometimes, sometimes being smart and, and listening to someone who's smarter doesn't happen.
Right. My second question is, what if I own a piece of property, say on Sweetwater Hill? Lots next to the canal there. And does the canal company now, if this passes, does the canal company have the right to say you can't build there? And me as a property owner bought a lot full faith that I could build on it. Now my property, which I paid a lot of money for, is valued at zero, you know, worthless. Where does the county come in on that? What's gonna happen?
I'm happy to address that if you'd like.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, uh, what this proposed ordinance does is create two, articulate two zones, right? The first one is thirty-three feet from the center line of the canal on both sides. Um, in that first zone, it states, that is the, uh, we believe to be the prescriptive easement of the canal company. So, you can't build anything in there that interferes with the canal company's ability to access the canal to maintain it. Anything you do, you have to understand, could be removed, should be planted bush, it, it'll get run over. And that's the first zone, I think we all agree on that. This ordinance stakes that first zone, I don't think it's necessary to even stake that first zone because that is the law of easements. Um, it's just restating in a place where it can be found easily, what I think is already the law. If you build a fence across that and interferes with the canal company's dredging, the fence is gonna get removed. Uh, Garden City has that same, uh, thing, the second, which is, uh, the second zone is what's called the protective strip. The protective strip is defined as a hundred feet from the center line, so it's going sixty-seven feet beyond that easement on one side. The protective strip does not extend on the uphill bank of a canal, so we're talking flat and downs.
Question on that?
Let, uh, let me put up here in that, let me finish answering this question first. So the question I think was, uh, could the canal company use that hundred feet to prevent building? So what happens, uh, proposed, uh, in that hundred feet, again, it's the flat side and the downhill side, we're not talking uphill sides here at all. Before builder can build, or get authorization to build, um, two things have to occur, number one, they have to provide the canal company written notice of the proposed project. And two, they have to get approval from the county engineer. The canal company is only, uh, supposed to get notice, they don't have a veto. Uh, it's the county engineer that has to give approval. The county engineer, um, if the engineer deems it necessary, may require a full soil engineering report. So the idea there is if the engineer comes out and looks and says, look, you're ninety-five feet flat from that canal, you're fighting to build a house. No, no report would be required, but if the county engineer is in doubt at all whether the project, um, would, uh, threaten the integrity of the canal, the county engineer has the authority to require a full engineering soil report. The county engineer gives approval only when the engineer is satisfied that the proposed construction is unlikely to affect the integrity of the canal bank. And so I think in answer to your question, the proposal is, not that the canal company can veto anything, they just get notice and a chance to give input, it's the county engineer who has to be, um, satisfied that the proposed project is unlikely to affect the integrity of the canal bank. And that would depend, I guess, on, on the, certain on the bank parameters and on the project that is proposed. Does that answer your question?
So, not the
Not the, the company.
Canal company, but the county who's approved the law to build on.
Mm-hmm.
Could in fact, through a engineer, say, sorry, you're not building on that law.
In that scenario, the county engineer would have doubts as to the integrity of it.
Close that, put the county in a bad spot, you know, because they already approved those laws. To be built on.
I, I think from a building standpoint, no, they would just require them to have some crazy engineering, the engineer factory where the bank would.
They might have to put it in a tunnel or something in a.
Risk scenario, I think you'd have to pipe the canal, that, that's the solution that the canal company propose, has proposed in each of the situations subsequent where we have.
And who, whose obligation would that be? The landowner?
The landowner.
Okay.
And, and I got a situation on my place, the landowner built a house right in the ditch. Put a basement in and now he's piped the canal, didn't ask permission, didn't do nothing.
Where, where's that?
Up Woodford Creek.
Oh, okay.
So now we got a pipeline, I have no idea if it's gonna be big enough to pack the water.
Well, if they, again, I, I don't know what your bylaw say, but if that happened at Hodges Canal, we'd be, we, we've already done this once. We notified the property owner and basically forced them to tear the pipe out and put the red side pipe in and the right composition of pipe, so you have that. I mean, that's, that's just common, common law in, in my experiences. Somebody comes into your easement, does something they shouldn't do, you have the right to force them to do it right.
Yeah, there would be.
Go ahead.
So, does that, in the interstate, is that a federal or is it goes by?
Well. It, this ordinance would only apply in the Utah side.
So, we have a law on that, over the interstate, you know, it's two states.
No, this, this would only, this would only apply for, for Utah. The other issue is if you're running into Idaho, you would need whatever county that is to have them put in place the same type of an ordinance if you're worried about that. And I, Bart, you're, you said that Idaho already requires for canal companies to sign off, is that, is that right?
If you're running through, you have to notify, and they look away. I can't remember if they have a signature line on it, um, but we had to main go through that we weren't deserving our canal of anybody.
The law in Idaho is very similar to what you're doing, the planning and zoning commission has to notify the canal company owner, give them the opportunity to make a statement on any development applications that's submitted and then if, if it looks questionable, then the engineer can require building at some certain spots in the swells dome. There's different tools that need to be used.
I'll see.
So, it's in fact, if we have like a, that tax could be on it. Like, for, for instance, if we have diversion washout, we have to notify the county before we can fix it.
No, that's maintenance.
Paul? There must be some kind of law on the books, because the legislature's considering House Bill forty-five. Key point says this bill aims to clarify the responsibility of ditch and that owners or operations bill addresses seventeen points regarding irrigation, infrastructure, maintenance liability, maintenance facility, and so evidence. Clarify the regulation on this. I guess my question, the last question being, talking about pipeline, but pipeline either take care of all the problems. Does this ordinance lead to or allow the county to use them as domain to go across one person's property? Put a pipeline in or hike the trail? So I do, but a legal manager says they have one for pipeline across my ground?
Well, the pipeline. Well, the pipelines that have been put in so far have been within the easement of the canal. So if, if, if landowner says absolutely you can't go on my property, that the canal company still has an easement there that they can, that they can put the pipe in.
Well, there's things in there, there's like they did in the basin, they went in, put pipeline underneath the canal, still use the canal for flood control.
Right.
So it sounds like you guys are gonna all know a hundred percent more about water rights than I am. It's, it's a huge weakness I have. Um, and so your, your feedback's invaluable. Sounds like a lot of the problem comes from developing around these canals. So I just wonder, ha- have there ever been any issues inside of agricultural zoned areas with canals? And if, if not, can we just exempt, uh, zones that are, are zoned agricultural? That they just aren't, this ordinance doesn't apply to them?
It sounds like this is a Garden City problem. And I don't think it protects water. I don't want anybody else getting in my room. Welcome to my.
Well, that's why I wonder if we exempt ag zones, you know, it doesn't stop this ordinance from being, um, helpful when people are building homes. And in the future, if a development comes in, you want to sell your property, then this ordinance would apply to them to protect those that are upstream and downstream. Um, but it wouldn't hinder any of you guys from doing what you're already doing. I, I, I don't know if that's po- possible.
I think if we're clear, um, on the, the maintenance and that, you know, we just gotta be crystal clear on that. Kim?
Um, I just have a couple of things, but protective strip, why is it only on the downhill side? If you're getting close enough on the uphill side with the development and they do a lot of pavement stuff, you're gonna have some excessive runoff stuff that might get into that canal. Uh, and I'm just kinda curious as to why only the downhill side? Why not?
Water don't run uphill. I'm just saying.
Downhill a lot, and we did a lot of developments and they start putting a lot of pavement up, it's not going in the ground, it's gonna run off.
Yeah.
Well, then what, what does it bring with it? You know, for one, the water quality, and then for two, uh, does that not compromise the uphill side of the canal bank? I know it's not gonna run uphill, but I think it can still cause problems for the canal company.
Right, can you answer that?
I think I can answer that, at least for Garden City, which is where the problem is now that that would apply to. Garden City requires for a development to be platted, they have to provide a catchment system that will contain all of your shit. So in theory, if you build a development up on the upside of the canal where water might run down into the canal, you have to provide a catchment system to prevent that from happening. The real reason that we didn't, we exempted the upside of the canal is pretty much what Sim has said. Where we have problems is where people build under the canal, destabilize the bank, and the problem is the canal company now has a responsibility to contain that water even though someone else has broken the canal. That doesn't happen on the upside because you can dig down pretty deep and not really cause as many problems. And again, as, as some of the folks in this room have stated, we are sensitive to private property rights. We don't wanna be running all of people's private property if we don't need to. And even the protective strip is not an intent by the canal to expand their easement. It's just a way to make sure that when a development happens, that it doesn't create a disaster. And the property owners, in my opinion, should be grateful for that because they're the ones that end up being affected. If the canal reaches, it's not the canal property that's the easement that's, that's the problem. It's all the people below that, your neighbors, if it, if it happens on your property as well as you. So that's really what we're trying to do.
Yes, I got another question. I see that the canal company said put their water in non-use, put their temporary non-use. Uh, where's that water go when it's temporary non-use? My understanding is mostly high water. There's no dam or anything above it to control it. Use, it's gotta go somewhere. Is it just gonna go into the lake or are you gonna sell it to the Great Salt Lake and it's gonna make its way down or?
I can answer that too if you like. We had a meeting with the state water folks, uh, in July, or August.
August.
And they encouraged us to put all that water in non-use, not because it isn't being used, but it be- because it is. But as long as it's in a non-use status and we knew that status every seven years, the state is unable to come and re分成 that water to places like the Great Salt Lake. So basically, it's a cheap and free way to make sure our water stays with us.
Can I understand that's where the water goes?
Gone where it's always gone, right down the canal. Correct. Being in a non-use status doesn't mean you can't use it. It just means that you have excess capacity that you don't want reallocated because you will use it in the future. And it's the right way to do it. Garden City has had another way to do it and we're changing that over because according to the state folks that we talked with, the non-use status is the better way, the safer way to do it.
And it, and it, and it returns to the lake. Well, it, it does, it returns to the lake if it's not.
Right, yeah, it returns to bear lake though, it doesn't go to the Great Salt.
Yeah.
Legislature's working on putting more money to that, maybe. We tried in Woodruff to get some more water, sell it to the Great Salt Lake, but staying here, unless they didn't think they could get it through, well, you know. Get it delivered, so I guess we won't make any money off of it. I think you're, I think you're on the right track to add something in place. My concerns are with the agricultural areas and that. We can see where this would be a benefit, but I think, what you said. Uh, you had an engineer come out, say, don't do that, they went ahead and done it anyway. How can the engineers, how do you buy that experience? I could like tell them.
They're headed that way.
So, so you've got something in place, so they can take the engineer, and the engineer says, no, we don't want you to do that, here's what you have to do. And they have to say, hey, with you, we're gonna do it the way we wanna do it, so it's cheap, quicker, and faster.
The, the situation that happened over there, um, the engineer, uh, encouraged the developer to have some geotech work done. And they decided that they didn't wanna do the geotech work and they, they started with their project before it was ever even approved. And so they're hanging out that they, that they advised the developer that they needed to bring in some, a geotech and do some soil samples and, and some soil studies. And so it's a matter of he said, she said. We, as a, as an irrigation company over there, um, it was, okay, do we go into court? And fight in court and run up five or six or seven hundred thousand dollars in a, in a court, court case and probably five or six or seven da- years down the road? Or do we just go in and fix what it is? Not claiming any responsibility or liability, but getting the water running back down the canal. Now we're at that point, now I think we're in a position where there probably will be some legal action taken. Let me just put it that way. But when you go two years without any water at all, it was an issue of, do you spend the water on fixing the canal or the money on fixing the canal? Or do you spend it on attorney's fees and rolling the dice of ten, you know, four or five years down the road, not really even knowing whether you win? And then you're in, spent all your money that you could have fixed the canal in attorney's fees. So one person made, you know, made some money and that was the attorney, so. I, 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 I don't know, you know, there was a liability issue there and like I said, they're both pointing fingers to each other. So they're saying it's the attorney's or the engineer's fault, the engineer's saying, I, we advised geotech. And, uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's not an ideal situation.
But planning and zoning, shut. Production, they've had something to.
At that time in Garden City, you didn't have to have planning and zoning approval until you were building above the ground. Excavation of flat wood at that time in Garden City, it's not a committed process. It is not. And from this, this canal company's standpoint, um, all this stuff there, it wasn't permitted, now it is.
Now, now you have to give a permit to, to disturb that.
And you're taking the stuff with the engineers, expensive, you pay sixty thousand dollars. You didn't get much out of it, and it says you have to rush there.
The difference, I think, is in the developer's case in that situation, the engineer's advice was just that, his advice. The advantage of having this qualified ordinance now is the county engineer has some legislative cloud behind it. You're not gonna be able to ignore that advice and then claim later that.
Just, that's the.
So I wonder if some of this could be dealt with in a little bit different way, if we clearly state what landowners, agricultural landowners can and can't do. We just went through this in Botteller County, lots of family property that my family owns over there in Korean, where it's giving develop more and more alternative, they set up agricultural protection zones, which clearly states some of this kind of stuff in which an agricultural landlord is allowed to do. And it addresses a lot of other issues, whether it be banning hay and hay or hiding him or things like that, which it clearly states what the farmer, rancher is allowed to do without the public or the county or anybody else interfering with their ongoing agriculture operations. I just wondered in places like other corporate, they're in Garden City, like down in the south, wouldn't make sense to set up two agricultural protection zones. So there's some of these issues and some other bigger issues.
Tyler?
It's the first time I've seen it, so. I guess I'd request, as the county engineer, that you give us some time to do a little bit of review on this. I'm not paying by my toes.
Well, that's what, that's the reason we're having public here and wants some inputs and concerns, um, where, you know, we're not gonna approve anything today, but we wanna get this right. And we wanna make sure that everybody understands exactly what, number one, the purpose of it is, and number two, the impacts are, so.
Any, anybody online have anything?
Just, uh, Jones, the plan, the ground in the county. And the, just, you know, there, well, Sweetwater, is it zoned and is it, what is it zoned?
It's all recreational real estate now. Even in the county. I, I do not know for sure, but I believe so, running through my mind along the stretch of the canal, I don't think there's any part of that canal anymore. Perhaps except on the south side of Paradise Parkway, like.
Mike Glenson.
Probably still agricultural, but that's all one big piece of private property at the end of the canal. Uh, everything else I think is recreational real estate or single family, or maybe a few hillside estates, but there is some flavor of developable land, space or agricultural.
So. Controlling things by zone, zoning instead, because you get a, an ordinance countywide, I think it's better to be able to control by zones. Uh, because you can, you can change those as the needs arise in the future. Uh, versus just having one solid ordinance that covers the whole county, so I kinda like Jones, I, you know, exclude ag zones, if need be, rezone.
I would, again, speaking for Hodgins Canal, I would have no problem with the idea of agricultural exemption. So if it's in an ag zone, a- as long as you're not building a building or excavating, I wouldn't have a problem with it, but I certainly, other than that, would not leave it to zones because, again, bad examples. Garden City is the epitome of ignoring filthy laws for the benefit of developers. So if you start doing it with zoning, it's really, really easy to gerrymander those zones in a way that, that is gonna cause more problems than it solves. In my opinion.
Yeah, be careful with that, especially like Woodruff and that, how long it's gonna be in the belt, all those Californians and the skiers from California. Fight out, and you know, they can get that road opened up, get that, and have it year round, and then have their, you know, second homes up there on the top and start coming in. I mean, you know, it's, it, the development is, that is why it's, you've gotta watch out for the, the poor shadowing involved. Make sure everybody's kinda covered now, and, you know, your kids and, and, uh, you know, whoever's gonna run this place after everybody, all of us are gone. They still get the key building rights and be able to use them all.
We need to, we need to roll. But that's where zoning does. Yeah. Zoning has. That really. And, you know, it allows the community to look at it instead of just a single engineer, whoever, it allows them to hold the board. It's community members to, to look at something and make, make decisions one person. So I'm playing this on, this by some.
Just, just FYI, there is a big company that owns ground up above, you know, above you guys that were, were talking at one point in time about developing that. But they still own the ground, so far it hasn't been developed because they can't get the water they need, but there is some, they do have ground that they are folding. Trying to figure out how to do it all of that.
It's probably not, it's probably not ever, not, not ever gonna happen. It's just a matter of when, so we gotta be prepared. Joe?
A lot of us, I think, in here that are fine with the spirit of this, we like the protection of the canal companies. They maybe just, one thing that would be unsettling some of this is, maybe just add definition for maintenance in there, that it means clean, it means bank.
Okay, we can do that. Ben's got chicken scratches all over this paper here, so.
So I've been taking notes while you guys are talking. Um, if we added a definition for maintenance to make it very clear what things, uh, you can do, the things I heard were headgate maintenance, pivot pumps.
Banks.
And repair.
Over the place.
What about like stabilizing canal walls?
That's a compromise, the bank or anything's gonna start tearing down all that roots and all that kind of stuff. Maybe that needs to be on the other side of that.
Well, that, that's always done with the oversight of the canal company, by experience. So that's one of those situations where if you're stupid, you're stupid and you can't fix that. So if you're, if you're on the canal boards, you're stupid or you're responsible.
I can't like the zoning idea, but for several, maybe arguing with my uncle Bill Kennedy. That metal is ranch and what we can do, can't do. From the construction side and the other side. They know Garden City's, they ignore it and it's all they, you gotta, oh, they, they need their attorney in front of that writer.
Okay, Clint?
About an issue on the hundred foot protective zone, you know, a canal runs through somebody's property for two or three miles. That's a lot of ground. It's not gonna affect property values or the lights on that point five or, you know, down here in these valleys, some of these canals run miles through people, single landowners property. That's gonna tie up a bunch of ground.
The RW canal from, from start to finish, sixteen miles long.
You know, I'm just, that's just the concern I had, you know, for me, that I thought I mentioned it for you guys, see what, what's up there.
Just an easement, they don't own it.
It's not an easement, it's just a, a zone that falls within, uh.
Needing approval.
Needing some.
I get what you're saying, look, it's two hundred feet on both sides over two miles, it's, it's like fifty acres of, it's, it's a lot.
Again, it's it's not two hundred feet, it's a hundred feet.
Hundred feet on each side.
It's only on the down, it's only on the downwind side. And again, it's not an easement, it's just a zone where you. Need to do what honestly, in my opinion, is the responsible thing, which is make sure you don't undermine the canal bank. But enough people have proven that they either don't care or are not aware of what they're doing. We're just asking that the county. Would have offered a place to prevent people from doing something that's going to negatively impact them. I don't, I don't see how it changes property values at all.
Things that change property values are what property is selling for.
Correct.
Because I have to be ten percent higher than all of what property, within ten percent of all properties are selling for. My values and so unless all of a sudden people decided that hundred percent, hundred foot protective strip on the downwind side is. We're making that value of that property worth a lot more and they're really paying off the mortgage, but that's what will affect property values. Not just because there's. I'd say if there's a protective strip there, then they, anybody has the right to come up here for.
So can I address that?
Yeah.
So that's, that's a separate issue that this this ordinance does not do. Right now, there's a canal easement through your property, the canal already has the right access to easement to maintain it and. And that's, that's the a legal fact of the existence of the easement. The extra hundred foot protection zone does not give people the right access beyond that easement. All it says is you're going to do, if you're going to change the bank. Or do excavation. That you get approval from the county engineer. Nobody's walking around in a hundred feet, it doesn't expand the easement. The easement already exists and it will exist whether this is passed or not.
We don't have any, that's one word.
If you have a canal, you have an.
You don't have a canal, you just have a creek.
Then.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Thank you so much. That that makes the world.
We've satisfied one person.
Senator Command.
Yeah, let's not make this the way you need longer.
The definition of canal under this ordinance would be a waterway owned and operated by an irrigation or canal company. And Wooddrift Creek is not owned or operated by a canal company.
Yeah, actually it is.
Is it?
Yeah.
Now plus an.
Water in the area, the county has the authority to distribute the water. Coming down to actual ownership and property areas. Great question, does uh? Does the canal company have the legal right to alter the course of the waterway? To decree, they can.
Oh, up there, their situation, no.
So again, there isn't a situation where the canal company is going to come through there with a. Bulldozer or a cat and.
Well.
Shape the water.
It, you know, in the case of when they have high water and have washouts and those kind of things. It's supposed to be repaired, but it's supposed to be under the jurisdiction of the of the Corps of Engineers. Like the waterway itself cannot be.
So it still wouldn't fall under this simply, you don't have the.
These are, you know, the most, the most canals, what we're talking about is is our manmade canals.
Okay, well, we've got your. Concerns and issues marked down here and. Like Bill said, there won't be, will be nothing decided today, so. Any other things, any seconds before we close the public hearing?
Yes, but if you have any more meetings on this, notify the irrigation companies.
Okay. TR?
Same, I agree with Wally, just, you know, when you get all finished with this. I think we need to be. Able to at least look at it before you pass it.
Okay. We can certainly do that when I get it wrote, get it wrote up.
Well, of course not, so um how do we, how do we make sure everybody sees it besides the normal public?
Well, we.
That's already a possibility to be aware of. Can we leave your emails or contact information, at least people in the room, wherever we get.
Yeah, so there, there needs to be a roll go around, um and if you would like to have.
Well, I think you should, because you probably don't get.
That might have been my fault because I know all the canal companies over on my side of the county were notified because I know. I honestly didn't, didn't notify anybody else, so. I'm happy to be the point person on that if people from other canal companies want to give me their contact info, I will. I will be happy to write her on that.
That sounds great, I if I have one point of.
Then you can all be back.
Okay, so if you, yeah, if you're interested in the end draft, put your email or. Address down on the roll. Okay, all move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, move in second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Moving. Open the public hearing for short term rental.
Second, okay, it's moving second that we open a public hearing for. Short term rental. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mitch?
So we just moved to open the public hearing, so we're in a public hearing right now.
I didn't hear that.
For the short term.
Okay.
Okay, why don't you go ahead, Ben?
Okay. All right, so. This is a continued public hearing, like we had a public hearing in December. On uh. Mending our short term rental ordinance. The sticking point last month was. On the fees. The idea was to have a tiered structure again. So that we're not treating somebody who has like a sixty person. Mega rental the same as someone who has a condo that would rent to four people.
Yeah, so we're still, we're still in session as a commission meeting, so would you take your conversations outside, please?
For short term rental, yeah.
So like they did by numbers being.
Yes.
So whatever their maximum number is.
They have to pick a number and that's okay. Yeah, if I wanted a license for a hundred people, I'd have to pay. Assuming if the square footage worked, I'd have to pay. For a hundred.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, do you all have this in front of you?
Yeah, yes.
Let me have your turn to section seven fees. So the idea is uh that rather than have it be. I think that we're going to a thousand dollars per.
Yeah, that's what was proposed.
Proposed. The idea instead was to do. License fee of twenty five dollars per person multiplied by the approved total occupancy of the rental property. So. A person might request to have fifty people. But after the inspection. Then. The permit might only be issued for forty people. Uh, forty people based on the parking or the bedrooms that meet fire code or something. So we can go off of the forty people times twenty five dollars per person and the. Fee would then be a thousand dollars um. For someone who just has a small condo with four people being rented to would be a hundred dollars. And then renewal. Uh, we did the same per person, but then it would be fifteen dollars multiplied by the total occupancy. Obviously, those figures could change, that was just a stab in the dark to see um. And I think Mitch, you did, maybe it wasn't a stab in the dark, you did an analysis of what our costs of administering this are. Divided by the number of. Permits that have been.
Yeah, I didn't look at the cost of administration, I just, I just, you know, did a tally of of, you know, the number of units we've got. Uh, the number of people that are included in each of those units, I did a median, I did a um an average, which is about twenty. And then just suggested that maybe a thousand is unreasonable because, I mean, it really, it unfairly penalizes those on the low end. We don't have very many on the low end, very, a very small number.
But there are a few.
But there are a few, um and I went and visited with Garden City and asked how they dealt with that and they, they said. Uh, you know, we kind of like the county, they don't have a ton of those, they said the ones that they did have just went, eh, it's just not worth it to us anymore. Um, they weren't overly upset or anything like that, but I, I think when you go per person. Uh, that's a much more equitable way to distribute the permit. In terms of administration, I've not put numbers to that, I started doing that this last little while. Uh, you know, as renewals come in, I'm looking at, you know, how much time it actually takes and, and every renewal takes about an hour, oddly enough. Because we go through and we make sure that what they're proposing is consistent with what was done in their, their original application. We make sure that they're, they've got a new manager, that we change that information in their um, in the uh, the database and. It just takes time to review all of the stuff that they submit. And that doesn't count the cost of the software that you're using.
And I guess we have the reduced um rate for renewals, just to encourage them to keep compliant, is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay.
And the costs are like, like I said, a little less on a renewal. Than for. The initial permit.
I really like it, uh, because I think it's going to be cool to be able to see, here's how many people we have licensed, you know, among the hundred rentals. We have, you know, two hundred and fifty. We're paying for two hundred and fifty people, you know, and so we can see what a carrying capacity should be if they're all maxed out. Which would be probably closer to two thousand or twenty five hundred if it's, the average is around twenty.
You said the average size we're doing is twenty.
I think we need to move forward with that.
Yeah, I don't see any changes that need to be done.
Guess no public.
Any comments on the short term rental?
Move the close of public hearing.
Second. What's that? Okay.
I just was curious because we think that's personal property for the short term. One thing I have a problem with is people that quit short terming, they don't let us know. So we spend a lot of time trying to send out the personal property and then, you know, two years later, they finally decide to tell us that they're no longer doing that, that's.
Right.
No, that is contained in this at all.
We might. You know, if they decide to quit, I mean, if they don't renew, that might be something that we could. Get that information to you sooner.
Just keep a running list, you know.
It's not the county that's the problem, it's Garden City.
Yeah.
Is outside that scope.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I seconded that we close the public hearing.
Okay, move in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
And you.
All right.
I would have moved, okay. Let's see, ready, I think we are. We, we've had a public hearing, I'd move that we adopt the short term rental ordinance.
Second.
Move in second that we.
Clean copy.
Adopt the short term rental ordinance.
Yeah, amended, I guess.
She'll have a number, I get, you'll have a number for this.
So given that information, then I probably need to get all the application forms and maybe even a notice on the website, letting people know that it's not a flat fee anymore. That from here on out is.
We'll get this published on our website.
Per person.
And then this is the application form, which is also on our website. And I'll uh edit it so it complies with our new ordinance and get it on the website too.
Great, uh, give me a copy because the software that you use now incorporates that, so.
Yeah, I'll get it to you. Double S.
Well, maybe. So. All right.
Yeah, we can talk about that in a second.
Copy, Ben, the copy that you had given me, was there any changes?
No. Did I give it to you after the last meeting?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay, I think we're, we're good, we're good, Ben?
Yeah.
Okay, uh. We'll have a break for lunch, be meet back here at one fifteen. Let's, let's meet back at one. And do our other stuff.
I put him very last, but uh is there a way that we could move his up a little bit?
Yeah, we can move him to Dan Parrot's spot at one. Is that quick enough?
Sure.
Sure.
Reading back to order. Um Mitch discussion on contract.
Okay, so I was gonna visit with you guys about our short-term rental software of GovOS and just give you an overview of how the software itself works and compare and contrast it to what we've had in the past. Um you know, in the last seven years, this is the third software company that we've been um engaged with. Um you know, with new software, um you know, there's always a learning curve associated with it, but I I definitely see some red flags, things that I'm concerned about. Um in the in the software itself, it uh I'm sure it works fine. It's it's kind of a large type of software and they are modifying it to fit like short-term rentals. So there's lots of things, it's it's got lots of applicability to a lot of different governmental uh type of institutions and we're just using it for the short-term rental component of it. Um you know, we've been working pretty diligently on it uh for like the last probably three months, three or four months, uh something like that. And within the last couple of weeks, I'm starting to get, we got the uh the uh the website posted on the county's website so applicants can go in, go in and get registered. Uh we're starting to see those roll in. Um it is, like I said, it's a little bit different than what we've seen in the past. One of one of the things I find is not helpful um with it. In 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 previous softwares, we had like, it's called a dashboard. It shows a, you know, an aerial photo of the county and then a dot where all of our short-term rentals are. In the past, this was simple because it showed either these are permitted or these are not permitted. It was either black or white. GovOS just shows us who rents from what company, whether it's Airbnb or VRVO or or FlipKey, which isn't particularly helpful. Um the one thing I do like about them is the the way that their their permitting information comes in. It's on a, it's on a, what's it, they call the site, business license and and taxation. Uh and it basically just shows me these are the documents that have been submitted. I could click on them very easily and then go to another, you know, another subfolder and just hit, you know, hit approve so that I can move forward. Um so with that, you know, we've been moving forward. One of the bigger concerns I have with the company is just lack of um lack of attentiveness. Uh you know, we were, last year about this time, we were starting to get the process moving forward where we get all the documents transitioned over to their uh to their site, um and get everything set up. And then about uh things kind of started tapering off around June and then it was radio silence. I didn't hear anything from GovOS for four months. Um and all of a sudden they came back and so since about September, we've been meeting, you know, about weekly. Um basically catching up and getting things uh back up to speed where they were. Uh and and I I asked him about this and they just said, well, you know, we had an upper manager that uh kind of checked out and just didn't really share anything with us. And I'm going, not an apology, not not even a, you know, we'll reduce your contract by this amount because it basically wiped out uh the most important part of the year. Um so I know there's been some discussion about going with another, you know, another software company. And in full disclosure, I do have a conflict of interest because my wife does work for uh one of the competitors that you're considering and I just want to be that. I wanted that to be uh on the record and 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 known by all. So I try to give an objective uh overview of the software. I I don't want to taint it, that's just, this has been my experience and and what I've seen, so.
So we've been with them now um for eighteen months, basically. Um the contract started in June, or excuse me, yeah, first of July of twenty-three. Um so we went to first of July in twenty-four, now we're in January of twenty-five. Um in the last eighteen months, have we made any headway at all?
No, I am barely using the software now. Within the last two weeks, that's when the, you call it go live. That's when the uh the website is posted on the county's website so applicants can go in and start getting registered. Um and I'm working through getting an understanding of how that workflow works. Uh and I'm I'm getting a handle on that fairly good.
Okay.
So, yeah, so two weeks worth of the of the usable project.
And um they can go on and renew their. Now with the changes we made today, how big of an issue is that going to be now in their, the uh price of their? Have their renewal?
Uh you know, it depends on the applicant, right? So when the applicant comes in.
Yeah, but are they gonna know that?
They're not, this is where it's gonna get dicey because the renewals are, they're gonna have to go back and look at whatever the uh building inspector approved them for and submit that.
And we're trying to renew them all the first of January, correct?
Uh no, we have a renewal period from January first to uh like March thirty-first.
Okay, but I mean, if somebody's on top of it.
Mm-hmm.
They're gonna renew and they're gonna know, how hard is it going to be to get into software, the new rates?
Uh I don't think it'll be that hard. We'll just let them know that there's a rate change and they can send out a new, uh they have a a masked email that they send out as a reminder, tell the renewal parties, we'll take the information.
Okay, so this contract basically we're under right now is good till the end of June. Um. All right, it looks like that if we're not going, it automatically renews unless we give them thirty days of prior notice. Um so I guess we need to make a decision if we want to give them a thirty-day notice and uh move to a different provider or um stay with them and see how the next thirty days goes, but I guess that's a decision we need to make. Um as the renewal goes, it will go up ten percent. They've got a ten percent increase built into it every every year.
Hmm.
Yeah, go ahead.
Short-term rentals also affect me and I've never ever been consulted in software or anything like that because I have to send that person property and try to collect on short-term rentals, which is pretty good size. That's, that's a pretty big job to undertake. But I've never ever been consulted on this and when the Granicus stuff, I said, can't I use that as well to kind of make sure that we're picking up all of the short-term rentals? Because I went through and and looked at all of the Airbnb, all the advertisements on Airbnb and all of those um short-term rental companies and picked up most of the ones that I have. Uh we send out and try to get information from um from Mitch and from the garden, Garden City itself so that we can, so we know who's renewed or who's current with the short-term round. Uh but my concern is it would be nice for me to have access to that information also so I can make sure that I'm picking up all the.
What do you, what do you need to seek him, like just where they are?
Well, the problem.
And how many there are?
Let's choose that one for an example. They had stuff on there that was not even, that was obsolete. They had stuff on there that twice, that because there was no, I don't know if they did better than that. I have had none of them come to me to get information as far as location or anything like that. So I'm not sure where they're getting all their information from, but it just wasn't, didn't help me much at all. Granicus didn't because it didn't, didn't help at all, but it's kind of nice to know like. But it just wasn't, didn't help me much at all, Granicus didn't, because it didn't, didn't help at all, but it's kind of nice to know like. A contact name, like who's doing it, or a company name, if they're doing it through Airbnb or. Or some of the other sites. Um, or even a contact for the person, and are they current or not? Are they expired and not renewed? Because sometimes those were not taken off the Granicus site, it was, it was obsolete.
Would it help you if I? Uh, so with Granicus and SDR Helper, we kept a uh, an Excel spreadsheet that listed all those things that you're talking about. The name of the owner, the name of the management company, uh parcel number, physical address, stuff like that.
That would all be helpful.
That would be helpful, we just sent that to you like on a quarterly basis, maybe, okay?
Now, there's some other, I don't know what companies you're looking at, I don't know anything about this GovOS. Um, there was a vendor that was at some of my meetings, um Dustin. Can't remember his last name. And he went through some stuff, I think they're based out of Colorado possibly, I might get you Uggins card. So I can get you information on that, but they had a pretty up to date life. Uh. Short term rental website. That they were tracking daily, they were updating things daily and getting some information on. Um, and I don't know how many this cost me compared to any of these others, but if we've gone through three companies in seven years.
Well, it's hard because the, it's hard because the first two were out competing each other, and one had to give in to the other. It it was just a matter of.
It's the same thing, we're going through software like crazy. Uh, and like I said, um, it might be worth looking at some of these other vendors having valuable presentation. And see what might be the best. I'm sure it would be worth their time to do that. And maybe some of the other smaller counties might have something that they're using, they probably don't have a lot of short term rentals though. But um, it just seems like we're going through a lot of software and we just keep changing, you know, three times in seven years, that's not much to even. To get trained and and use the software and figure out. All right. As you said, there's a learning curve with the, every time we update software. And I'm sure there's gotta be companies that are, that are out there, that are a little bit more responsive without, uh, doing nothing for eighteen months. Because we're paying for it, and we should be giving us something. Within a few months' time, not, not eighteen months worth. Like I said, I go through some of these presentations with, you know, we, I'm heavily involved in short term rentals. So. As far as trying to collect money on them, not speed, you know, per se, as far as the contract or whatever, the permit, but. So I'm just trying to pick up the personal.
So, okay, so we talked about me sending you a copy of the spreadsheet. What would be a value having access to the, to the software, like what, what, if you go in, what do you look for? The the fact that it's, that there is a short term rental there?
That would be helpful if you knew exactly which ones are short term rentals, sort of guidelines you can look. But if they're outdated, it'd be significant spreadsheet, if there's things on there that have not renewed and they're not doing it anymore, it'd be nice to add a month spreadsheet.
There is a, it is a revolving door, uh, with short term rentals, and and the and the software is, not the software, the uh spreadsheet. In the past that we've used with GovOS, or I'm sorry, Granicus and SDR Helper. There was a uh, a digit, and the di- the the digit would change if they were renting or if they were not renting, and that was manually input by me. You know, when I, every year, if they're going to renew, that goes from zero to one, if they're, if they submit an application. Uh, and if they stop renting, I don't know that, they don't ever notify me, that would then be something else we have to build into this, into the, like our ordinance. Um, because there's no. Uh, there's no trigger mechanism for an applicant to go, oh, well, I'm, I guess I'll notify the county that I'm done renting, they just stop renting and wear none the wiser. In terms of the software, the software, at least that we're using now, uh, does not tell you necessarily, right? They they go through and they um, they scour the internet, the the main sites, the Airbnb, the FlipKeys, the 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 Ver- the Verbos. And they put a pushpin on where that listing is, and it's not exact, it's a, this is a general area of where it is, so that I don't know would even help you at all.
But on some software, you click on that and we'll give you the address and contact information.
Almost none of them will give you the address, because those don't, now, now the STR. Would, because they had a team behind the scenes that is collecting that information, so the push, pushpin is accurate. On GovOS, you have to go in kind of backdoor through additional clicks to find out what the actual address is.
And see, the one of the te- the technology I was talking about is Deckard Technology. And that um. That is one that looked real appealing to me.
And I, yeah, I've had the presentation from Deckard as well.
And like I said, it looked pretty good, it looked like it could do some of the stuff, and they were updating constantly. They weren't just letting it sit stagnant till they got another round of information from. From us or whatever it needs to be, I don't know where they're getting that information to update.
So, so they have web crawler software that hits all these, these different sites, and that, and that's one of the. Selling points that that these different companies will, will advertise, as we crawl ten thousand sites, and there's, there are lots of them. But the vast majority in our area just use, you know, Airbnb, Verbo, uh FlipKey. The the challenges of the software does, is my understanding that they don't actually hit like individual websites. And they don't do Facebook and they don't do Craigslist.
Yeah, and there's a bunch of ours.
There's always gonna be those outliers, right?
Do, do their own. And there's a couple like Berry Management. They have a few.
Sure.
Many. Uh, so there's a, you know, there's, there's some other companies that have, I think it's EG Management that has like two or three. So there's quite a bit of that that. You know, may not be picked up, and I'm not sure that their tech, Deckard Technologies would or not, but.
Right.
I'm just, it just seems like we're going, we're jumping software in town when. You know, it would just be helpful for me to be able to track them as well, that's half the battle is. Tracking them, they change hands and then people don't want short term. But right now, that's a big selling point in the Garden City area, is that it's, you know, it can be used for a short term rental, and here's the rental history. That's huge, a huge selling point for properties over there. So, like I said, we try to. We're trying to track. Track that information for not only the personal property, but also for. Is it selling higher because they're using it or they're advertising it as a short term rental? Is that a possibility, and are they selling higher than they would be if they didn't, they were in a subdivision that didn't allow that? So, I'm looking at it in terms of a lot of different things.
Valuation.
Not just. Not just the personal property, but that's why I kind of wanted access, but then Granicus didn't help me, and I didn't even know he had switched to. Uh. SDR Helper. And I didn't know he'd switched to the GovOS either. And maybe that's my fault, but it just seems like. Word. No wonder we can't track them. You know, because we had a few on this one and a few more here, and a few more over here, and, you know. So, just, just, you know, comments from listening.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome, uh, one thing before I leave, uh, two things actually. Um, I'm working with Kaya right now to see if we can kind of pitch or uh close a hole. In our uh connection between the Recorder's Office and Planning and Zoning, what we're, we're finding is that people will split off a piece of property. And just go and record it in Kaya's office and not go through like the planning and zoning, like the lot split process. Um, and I've suggested to her that maybe what we want to do is if she gets, uh, you know, a survey that comes in. That has not received like a letter of approval from Planning and Zoning, that she just puts some kind of label on it, like that it was illegally split. And then it can't get a building permit from. Uh, Tyler until that, that illegal split is rectified, meaning they have to come back through Planning and Zoning. Um, otherwise, people will just continue, they'll just circumvent Planning and Zoning and just split off property wherever, whenever they want, so. One thing I'm working on, um, also I met with. Um, the Department of Ag Water Resources and uh. Uh, Water Rights, um, regarding our water plan, and so they will be sending us a contract. And I suggested that there are two signatories on it, one for the Chairman of the Board and also one for the clerk. So, we'll be, I'll be bringing that in, I would imagine it's gonna be next one, but I know that's going on.
Okay, appreciate it.
All right, well, keep me posted on uh how you would like me to proceed.
You guys wanna make any action today, or? Um, on the software?
I definitely don't think we're, we're gonna renew GovOS, so we just need to consider what other. I mean, I, I personally don't feel like we should renew GovOS if we're eighteen months into it, and this is. Um, the type of product we see. So, um. I don't know, we need a motion since our contract isn't expiring yet, but I would say we definitely explore. Other softwares quickly. What do you think, Bill?
Well, I would, if we're interested in Zaurus, I would uh like to see a. A draft contract of what that is and what he's, you know, what that is and. Um, Kim mentioned another. Another software, um.
Would you be willing to get a quote from Deck- Deckard Technologies too?
Sure.
And then we we can involve Kim in on the process, if you see something that we could approve or improve on or that you want to be involved in, it's fine.
Okay.
I will. Let's do that and try to have something by the February meeting.
And you want me to continue going down the road of GovOS?
Yeah, we're still under their contract for.
Yeah, even if we use them through June, you know, all the way till they're done.
Okay, then I will instruct them to make the changes regarding our.
Yeah, if they're gonna be renewals, um, yeah, we need to, because even if. No matter if we change, we're gonna be in this renewal process, and we're gonna be at least a month down the road. Let's just go ahead and, and get the rates and the renewals of what ones they're doing online.
Okay, sounds good.
You know, I don't know, you spend time with the legislature and stuff. At one point in time, the state was talking about tracking short term rentals at a state level. Have you heard any more discussion about that? I know Representative Val- or uh. What he's calling out, uh Valentine, John Valentine, one of the commissioners from the Tax Commission. At one point in time, they were exploring that, and I don't think that that's really gone anywhere, and I don't know if you've heard any talk about them doing any more with that.
I don't know, there was some talk a couple of years ago, but I have not heard anything.
I think that's where GovOS came from.
Basically.
I think GovOS was the one going in for that, and instead they cozied up to all the commissioners.
There was, there was talk at one point in time, but I haven't heard anything either, when I asked. Um, Commissioner Valentine. About it, it was last year, he said that hadn't gone anywhere yet, but it wasn't off the table for discussion, but. I just wondered if there was anything new coming up for two thousand twenty-five. I heard anything, because I, you know, they're gonna do some statewide, that would kind of make a difference on what we wanted to do as well. But if they're not, then it looks.
I don't know, we'll know pretty quick, um, but as of right now, I don't know of any legislation centered around.
I hadn't heard anything.
You know, they're, there's, they're talking about, well, they're talking about. Um. Collecting more TRT tax and that would go into. Other avenues that the legislature would use, but as far as doing tracking, I haven't heard anything about that, so.
Okay, thanks, Commissioners.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Blair, come on up.
Thank you, Commissioners, I appreciate that.
All right, you're good.
Glad you're here.
See you.
We got lots of questions for you, so.
Happy to answer whatever you have. Oh, I do have uh just a couple of things I wanted to um just discuss with you, um, one of them is the fill payment, so. We're dropping that off again this year, um, the amount is one thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-one cents. I mean, so that's for the two properties that we manage here in the county. And we have Woodruff Co-op, and then we also have um Swan Creek up by Garden City. Uh, we've had a couple of activities going on with some management plan changes, and so one of those on Woodruff Co-op, um, is to. Essentially adjust the grazing regime down there, so we work with Bill Kennedy, BLM, and some others. And tried to essentially have the same amount of grazing, but target it on some different areas on the property, so. Uh, we're gonna be actually exploring some electronic collars, similar to like what you put on your dog, that'll shock cows if they get into areas we don't want them. So we're kind of excited about that technology, see how it works, and hopefully it'll help us to just have better.
Virtual fencing.
Yep. So, so yeah, that should be um coming through as one of our changes down there. And then on Swan Creek, um, we've improved some of the parking lot up there, and I believe the county contributed quite a bit of the gravel for that parking lot, so we appreciate that contribution. Um, one of the discussions we've been having down there is potentially closing the road that drives in, um, and closing that to motorized vehicles. And we're getting more and more traffic on it all the time, a lot of it is just people that are here, you know, seasonally, just people renting and wanting to go drive around. And we're seeing a lot of damage on the road and on the property as well, it's just a lot of accidents up there, I believe there's been a couple of pretty serious things up there. Last couple of years, so. Kind of what we'd be proposing is closing that road down to motorized vehicles, but still allowing people to access it by foot, um bike, horses, and things like that. Um, it should improve the prod- proper, or the quality of the property. Uh, both for wildlife and just make it a cool place for hunting and all the other stuff that happens down there.
Which, which particular are we talking about?
Um, so it'd be the main road going through um Swan Creek.
Okay.
And so probably closing up close to where that parking lot area is.
Yeah.
Um, and then making it basically an area where you would just walk in and.
So you wouldn't be able to go past the parking.
Beyond that?
Yep.
Is that where your time?
Yep. Yep.
Can you reach her?
Um, so yeah, we've, we've talked a bit with the Garden City Mayor, he seems to be supportive of it, so it's probably something they should be hearing about in the future. Um, and then also I wanted to share some of the data from just uh wildlife work that's happened in the county for the last year. Um, as far as predator removal, um, we haven't had any bears here, but we have had some in most of the surrounding counties, so. Fortunately, no bears have been entering into the county and causing problems. Uh, we did remove one cougar last year, had sixteen bobcats, and then a hundred and fifty-seven coyotes. A lot of that's just part of the cat work we've done for quite a few years in conjunction with Wildlife Services, um, it's a lot of aerial gunning. Well, some trapping and and things like that as well.
How many, how many coyotes?
A hundred and fifty-seven.
Hundred and fifty-seven.
Yep.
So, while we're talking about that, um. We've had a, a couple of uh. Sheep producers, um, that were gonna come in and talk to us about predator control. So, are, are some of their producers um sharing is a, with a, a match on predator control that you're doing?
Um, so a lot of this comes directly from um what the legislature gave us a couple of years ago for the Mule Deer Protection Act.
Yeah.
And so a lot of it directly funnels back into like mule deer work, but it's largely on the range lands where most of sheep grazing is taking place.
Okay.
Uh, most of it's done throughout the winter months, every time you get a good storm, usually they'll go up and they'll be able to track them down and and get quite a few that way. Um, there is some also as well as producers contact, um, us or Wildlife Services, and they'll go out and do trapping and removal efforts as well.
Okay, so if, if um a producer or a group of producers comes up with some money. Um, is there money available to match that money to do more of a. Uh, you know, a greater area or more on the ground, how does that work?
Um, not that I'm aware of, so a lot of like our federal money is tied directly back to wildlife management, and so we can't use it for a lot of predator. Removal efforts, um, if there is, then it's probably not something that would be correctly funneled through the Division of Wildlife and. I wouldn't be aware of anything, but it may.
You're not aware of any producers that are actually paying the division to get increased enforcement?
Yep. Yep, not that I'm aware of.
So there's a program. Is there a program to get a thermal scope? Or cost share on one?
Um, I'm not aware of anything either, at least through the division.
Okay.
But.
I, I know you had to have confirmed predator kills. And I've had, I had two years running where I had a government trapper confirm two wolf kills.
Oh, yeah.
My calves.
Yeah.
And so I wondered about. If I, if we qualified for something like, for going on the thermal scopes for one of the.
Yeah, I don't know for sure, I know it would, wouldn't be through the Division of Wildlife, but it might be through the Department of Ag or.
Must be.
Federal Wildlife Services.
I just heard rumors of that, and I saw it, I thought, I'm wondering if you had know, but.
Yeah, yep, yeah, I'm not sure on that end, but. Yeah, it's been a couple of years since we've had a confirmed wolf sighting up here, I assume, with all the wolf population growth in Wyoming and. What Colorado's doing.
I seen, I seen one for the first time in my life last week.
Oh, did you?
Coming home from Logan.
Oh, really?
In Logan Canyon.
Yeah. We know they moved through, and we haven't had a lot of real issues with them, a lot of times they'll kind of fall this way down and go through the UINs and. Usually make a big loop and fortunately go back, so. Um, at this point, we haven't documented any packs establishing in Utah, but it's probably.
Hopefully.
Matter of time, yeah.
So does your department, does Wildlife Resources manage the predators, or is that under U- UDAF?
Uh, a lot of it is under UDAF, it kind of depends on what it is, coyotes are specifically under them, and we do manage cougar and bears. And we do a lot of the management activities for them, and then a lot of the depredation.
Some of the UDAF.
Through that I talked to. Yeah.
So was any of the efforts like your aerial and that, is that coordinated with UDAF?
Yep, yeah, so we actually do all of the contracting with them to do aerial removals, we don't do any of it ourselves. So, um, they do that, a lot of the trappers, or their government trappers, come on do those activities as well. Um. In terms of depredation claims, they were down a little bit this last year, probably just because the, when it was a warm, little. Um, in terms of depredation claims, they were down a little bit this last year, probably just because when it was a little more mild than the previous winter. And we had twenty big game depredation claims, um, two turkey depredation claims, and then forty-five removals, and those were carcasses on roadways or deer that were put down or things like that, so. Um, nothing too significant and really no trends showing any real changes over the last couple of years, so.
So do you have, um, at least in the northern region, do you have numbers of how many have been hit on the highway, for example, do they keep track of them?
Yeah, so um, UDOT does a lot of contractors, it'll do the main roads, and then we collect data as well as we pick up, um, deer or whatever it is along the roadways. Um, I, it's, it depends on the area, it kind of depends on the winter as well. Winters like this, a lot of times deer and elk and everything are staying away from the roadways. But as it gets more significant, usually they push down lower and lower, and that's when we really start seeing issues. Um, typically, the biggest roadkill situations are usually November when deer are migrating, once they hit the winter ranges, it's usually thought, here it is bad, so. Um, I don't.
I noticed UDOT, the reason I ask is I noticed UDOT was picking up carcasses, um, have been picking up carcasses through the county where in the past I noticed you had contractors that was doing that, but UDOT's doing it this year, is that?
Yeah.
Is that a contract with UDOT or who, who, who's the contract under?
Uh, usually they're a private company, so there's quite a few around the state that'll do that, uh, and they'll set up a contract where they go a certain number of times on each roadway per month.
Is that with DNR or is that with UDOT?
It's with UDOT.
It is with UDOT.
But we did, uh, we built an app a couple of years ago, and so people are able to report roadkills now. Um, we also have our contractors and anyone picking those up will use that app as well, so. We're getting pretty good dope, uh, data about location and where those are happening, how frequently and and what species they are, so. That started to funnel back into some federal funding, and there's been state funding available as well for fencing and crossings and things like that, and so. As we identify those hotspots, there's projects that are starting to happen around the state to really reduce the number of roadkills.
So the numbers that you gave us, the sixteen bobcats, hundred and fifty-seven coyotes, would that include the number of coyotes, um, that the Department of Ag has taken? So is that, that's?
Yep, so those are.
Your agencies.
Yep, yep, so those are probably almost exclusively Department of Ag numbers. Um, there, what isn't included there is the Coyote Bounty Program, and so that's where we pay out for people to harvest coyotes and get them checked in. I don't know what those numbers are, but there's certainly a hundred and fifty-seven that have been taken in each county, both those programs.
And that's usually, so those, those programs, um, but they're, they're they're wildlife resource programs, are they not, or that, rather than Department of Ag?
Uh, so the the money comes to the Wildlife Resources and then we distribute it, um, based on kind of the needs, so. A lot of it is based, we just pass through from us to Department of Ag to do aerial gunning and trapping. Then we have a separate account that's set up that as people check in and do the bounty program.
That's what I mean, but that's the, that's the division.
Yeah, so we do administer that. Yep.
Okay.
Um, other than that, we just, we appreciate your partnership, your support on things happening with wildlife out here. Um, I've included my card on that paperwork, so please reach out if you have any questions, concerns or other issues related to wildlife.
Okay. Any question more?
Um, no, but I'll make a motion that we, um, thank Blair and the Utah Department of Natural Resources and accept the, uh, the pill check that he gave to us.
If we just had one more zero or two more zeros, it'd be really good.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's not large.
Moving second of all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Tune in, I say, thank you.
Yep, thank you all.
Thanks for coming up.
Yep, appreciate it. Yep.
Just, just one question, one, as far as, um, the virtual fencing and the, and the project that you've got going out on the co-op, when is that gonna start?
Um, I believe we're trying to get it in place, hopefully by this summer. Um, if not, it would be later, but right now, we're, we've been in the process of working with them and the extension and build, just to kind of get the plan in place. Uh, then we'll be doing some changes to the management plan, and so if not this summer, probably the next summer for sure.
Cause I, yeah, I, I, he starts out there the first of May, so.
Yeah.
Um, and then, and then, you know, and then leaves there, I believe it's like the end of June or middle of June, and so.
Yeah.
Wondering how that collar situation would work with, whether you have to renew, remove them once he left.
Yeah, so I believe they placed a temporary tower out there.
Yeah.
They just put the collars on the cows, and so I don't know if that equipment's even been purchased or not, um, but.
There's, yeah, there is, there's two towers.
Are there, okay.
Yeah, I, I do know that BLM has, actually BLM has two towers.
Okay.
That they, that they purchased and, and, uh, I know they talked about a pilot project here in Ridge County and that there would be a tower. They thought they could basically do that particular, I mean, out there with one tower, but they weren't sure.
Yeah.
So, and I guess he would just leave the collars on year round.
Yeah, at least as long as he was in that area. I mean, if you were still grazing within the city, that tower, and you could attempt essentially set up a virtual fence and and keep those on.
Right, but I mean, that, that's only, you know, he's only in their window of forty-five days or not even quite that.
Yeah.
That, that, you know, that, that, the program, the virtual fence program would be in place, so.
Yeah.
I just was wondering what, what was, would he have to renew, move those collars once he left the co-op area and went into his own private range?
I would assume they would be taken off, just cause I'm, I mean, they're fairly pricey and I would rather it's the year if they're running on things and that, they need to. So I would think they'd be taken off, but I'm honestly not familiar with a lot of the specific details of how they work or what would happen.
Yeah.
After the property is gone, so.
Okay, good, thanks.
All right, yep, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we call Jared. That's number. You got Jared's number?
Yeah, I got it, I got it.
Yeah, what do you guys have?
Right here.
Eight, one, nine, eight, oh, five?
Nine, nine.
Oh, it's four, three, five.
Yeah.
Two, one, okay.
Hey Jared, it's, we're in commission meeting here, we're just getting started, we, um, thought we'd give you a call and tell us about your business license that you're, uh, that you're applying for.
Contractor's license, um, I've been building homes and overbuilt for the last, you know, several years, and I just wanted to be a little bit more legitimate entity. And so I got my general contractor's license, and it's good to do so, I need to have a valid business. So starting a new construction company, Cedar and Stone. Time being, just our own, our development project.
Okay. Um, and I'm sure you'll have your own, being a contractor, you'll be, have your own bond, bond license and, and, uh, bond, bond insurance and bonds associated with your company, right?
Yeah, I've got my own. I, I don't anticipate needing a bond for the projects that I'll be doing. If I do, then I can go. But yeah, I've got my own general liability, workers comp, um, all of, all of my insurance is already in place.
Yeah, that's, that's what I meant, was, yeah.
So, do we need a copy of our, of these insurance?
It, yeah.
With the license?
Yeah, we'll, we'll need a copy of your liability insurance, just proving you have a policy, and that will go with your, uh, your, your license, or your, uh, yeah, your, your business license. We just keep that on file to show that you have, have liability insurance. Is that okay? Can you do that?
Yep, not a problem. They, they require me, before I can even apply to, apply to general contractor license from the Department of Professional Licensing, they require me to have insurance if they forget some stuff, so. Not a problem to send you a copy of that.
Yeah, we, we just require that to go with the business license to make sure that you do have one.
True, yes.
How many employees you got, Jared?
I don't plan on having any employees, uh, I'm gonna stop everything else like I've been doing.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions for Jared? Nope, I'll make a motion that we approve Jared Cedar and Stone Contract LLC for a business license. And that is my official motion.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, Jared.
Awesome.
You're good to go.
Appreciate you guys, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. See ya, bye. Richard, come on up.
Glad to see you here, Richard.
Glad to see you here.
Yep.
Talk about the millions of people you've seen this summer. All right. State your name and what, what you're here for.
Uh, Richard Drossbeck, Park Manager for Utah's Berwick State Park, and I'm here to give basically our Parks Annual Report uh, to the commission and give you an update of things that are going on, so. First on the little paper that I handed out, you see, uh, the comparisons, um, um, our division can kind of look set for, um, a standard of how well you're doing. Uh, so, uh, the first list there is the reserve, uh, park visitation figures, and they do it based upon the fiscal year, so that ended, um, June thirtieth, but as we started into summer, I kind of had a feeling that we were looking like, we were seeing numbers similar to the, the two COVID summers.
Yeah.
And, uh, by the report number, yeah, cause, uh, COVID between fiscal year twenty and twenty-one and twenty-two, you can see that we actually reported, had passed it.
All-time high.
For visitation, that's the, and that kind of goes, and it goes back to a few fiscal years, and then I added, I said that my first year here is the, my first fiscal, full fiscal year was two thousand and eight. And, uh, that was the, the hundred and ninety-eight, and almost two hundred thousand was the reported visitation. So, in that, uh, yeah, seventeen-year timeframe, we're what we're always seeing, more, more people coming, more people trying to enjoy the area. Um, the next on the list is the revenue collections. Again, as we were kind of seeing what felt like, more like the COVID summers, um, the revenue, uh, helped show that, so it was basically our second highest revenue year, only short to fiscal year twenty twenty-one, which was one of the COVID summers. Um, that we did have, we did have, and same thing with one of the, um, one of the key factors of how our, uh, our agency looks at, uh, how successful a park is, is the profit loss, and so basically it's our second highest profit year as well, so. And then I, I did the same thing there, I went back, um, I, I wanted to go back to fiscal two thousand and eight, but they've, fiscal year two thousand and twelve is when they changed the reporting to the focus on the profit, but it's also about the same, same timeframe when our division director back then, um, working with the legislature, changed things so that, uh, instead of our state parks division being, being relying upon general fund monies, they turned and said, we want you to be self-sufficient, so it basically says, we want you to at least break even as a whole agency. You, the monies that you collect from your, need to cover your operations. Um, so you, you know, they basically, so from two thousand and twelve on, you see that, uh, uh, Berwick State Park's been one of those that's always generated a profit.
Yeah.
But the profit is eventually even increased over the time. Then, uh, the third on that list, I like to kind of break down where the camping, you know, where the, where the revenue comes from, so. One more thing on that, of course, the revenue collections is what they report to us after our, our accounting folks in Salt Lake have taken out the sales tax and the transient room tax that we collect, so. Um, that number would be higher if you, if you just looked at the total raw revenue, but. Uh, anyway, so, uh, our revenue breakdown, uh, you know, like you see, our camping is about thirty-seven, also thirty-seven and a half percent of the revenue. Uh, day use is thirty-two, it went up a little bit. Um, the one thing I, I kind of see is, is we get more people that, uh, come to stay and short-term rentals or in their cabins. They still come visit the park and as a day use, so a lot of our Wasatch, front Wasatch back parks, uh, like Jordanale, Deer Creek, day use is their highest revenue producer percentage-wise. Our parks always had camping as, as it's, because we're more destination, we're further away from that Wasatch front population base, so. Uh, camping, but this year, you know, they just popped up a little bit and such like that, so. Anyway, that gives you a little bit of breakdown about uh, what we see, try to keep track of. Um, so the park activities, you know, talk about last year, we held the fifteenth annual Cisco Disco, Berwick Monster, Winter Fest. We're getting ready for the sixteenth annual one, so, in two, two and a half weeks. Uh, we did hold a light parade with the Raspberry Days, and then we still issue around forty or so special use permits for different activities or, uh, special events. Um, we're moving away from, uh, people trying to call their family reunion a special event. Yeah, with special use permit, because most of them just want campsites and they hold it, so we're determining that, uh, you know, a, a special event is something that truly has an impact upon the park, the park's resources where it displaces, where the event will displace park visitors. Uh, like we were working on one, there's the fellow that's doing a bike race in September. And basically, he's gonna have all of Cottonwood Campground, and that's, especially for me, is because that would displace anybody that would want to camp there, he's using that for that weekend, so. That's truly what a special use permit's for, or for like, uh, this year, we had two, um, kind of businesses doing some concession operations on the east side of the lake. And that's what, that's kind of what they're for, is to give them a, give them a shot at things, and then the things turn out well, then we move towards a long-term contract. Anyway, so, um, as for things, accidents and search and rescues on the lake, up in the mountains, we, actually it was a really mild, I, I call a mild year for water search and rescues. Uh, we did help Idaho or Berwick County on one drowning they had on their east beach. But other than that, there, there wasn't a lot of major incidents. So, and then, of course, the, the big thing is, uh, our, our major projects going on, you know. Um, people talk about the marina, they ask about the marina, why hasn't it started yet, and, you know, we have a process, and yes, things have started, but what they, what, they don't see the construction, and they think nothing's happened. There's a lot that goes on, uh, our core engineers permit, which has taken a while, is basically done. It's in the signature phase, which means that they've approved the thing to go. Uh, what we're, what we're facing right now is actually a permit from the BLM. A mining permit, because we're, uh, the area where, um, the county uses that little pit there on the west side, south-west part of the lake. A mining permit, because we're, uh, the area where, um, the county uses that little pit there on the west side, south west part of the lake. Um, that's state parks land that's patented from the BLM. And for, for the amount of soils that they need to cap under the, the new parking lot and the new dykes. Requires a, a mining pit from the BLM. We just, we, state parks just can't say, yeah, we can take it. And so we're working with that and in November, the BLM flip a couple more red flags. We thought we were. Moving forward to the point that the construction company could have actually started construction in November. And all of a sudden the BLM threw out a couple more things that we have to try to address. Uh, but we're hoping that, uh, we'll have that taken care of in. And, um, March, April, depending on snow, that we start seeing things happen. And then at that point in time, we'll work with the construction company and. Kind of get a, um, a plan in place to have minimal. Interruption or impact upon summertime use of the current marina. That's gonna be a, uh, fairly big issue.
Yeah.
But basically after Labor Day, then we'll have a little bit more. Freedom, but we gotta get through summer with minimal impact to our current visitor so that we don't lose. The access that we have and the use of the current arena. Yeah, anyway, so that's, that's the big ones. If anybody asks questions, that's where we're at. Um, the. Architect Engineering Company, um, Kimley Horn. And they, they're, they're, they're handling the, the public relations, that there's a website, bearlakemarinarexpansion.com. And we're told to direct folks to that, but unfortunately I've asked them to do a little better updates more often. And they haven't, but. They don't, they, they don't deal with the people on the land like I do.
Yeah.
Uh, anyway, but, yeah, and we're hoping that, uh, we can satisfy this BLM issue. Um, and be rolling as winter ends. Um, Rondville Beach, um, with the, the, what do you call it, South Shore Special Service District that we run the water system under. Uh, we went through, we've been through some major repairs and upgrades, um. All the pumps inside the, the water system have been replaced. State drinking water required us to put a high flow pump in, in addition to the two variable speed pumps that we have. Um, we got the pump in, but the, the current electrical line that runs from. Uh, the meter to the building is not big enough to handle the startup average required for the high flow pump. Uh, but it looks like, um. Um, through DFCM, this summer we'll actually have that addressed. But we'll put in a, a higher line and with money that they've got, we will have a. Propane backup generator. That will actually be able to be provided enough. Average of volts to run all three pumps at one time. So that's, that's kind of a good thing. It was a little bit of a surprise to us because we were just working on. A, a backup generator that would run one of the pumps, just to help maintain pressure, but they're actually saying we'll go for that fire flow and. So they're helping us out that way. So that should be done by the time we get to the, probably about midsummer. And that, then that, that'll probably represent nearly over, well over three hundred thousand dollars we've spent. About the last three years on, on that system. Um, we did have an issue. Of getting some, um, water samples that had, especially a higher, higher amounts of chloroform. And, uh, we figured that to having the, the lid or the seal on the tank lid was so old that it needed to be replaced. And once we had it replaced, we've not had a. A bad reading. So, uh, have to take care of things that way. Uh, on the east side, two, two other major projects we've had, um. I think Jim, did, did you come down to the, you, you came down to the ribbon cutting?
Yeah.
And so we did that one. It's, it's basically complete. He came and we, the last little thing that was done is. In October, they kinda grubbed the, basically a lot, a lot of white top. That had grown, grown, we'd mowed it, but they grubbed that out and seeded it with a, a native seed, grass seed mix. That's a two, two grass seed variety that they said, uh, we should only have to mow once or twice a summer, once it gets established. But it'll help keep the weeds down and have a, have a native grass mix, so. And then our division has given us eighteen grand, which shouldn't, hopefully a little bit, but. We've never had trees grow at North Eden except for below the high watermark, you know, cottonwoods that would grow when the lake got low. But we've got eighteen grand to spend to put some trees in.
What kind of trees?
That's a, that's the way to decide. I'm, I'm, I mean, there'll be some conifers, but you know, I'm not, I'm not a big fan of cottonwoods and willows, but they, they, they're the ones that grow the best.
Make a mess.
Um, you know, it's, some of the, the homes just to the south there on North Eden have some conifers. They grow a little bit slower. But I also know that if we have a good mix, that helps keep them healthier. We just found all cottonwoods, we have a chance for the cottonwood light, we have a mix of trees. So, that's what we're gonna be looking at that way. Uh, Rainbow Cove, if you've been down recently, you've seen a lot of earth that got moved. And, um. Fortunately, Norm Meekum is working on developing the property right to the north of it. And he's taking any of the soil, excess soils that we need, that we don't need and filling in that low ones. Um, which was also an issue for us, because like, hey, how can, he could fill the, that in and we had a little section there that. On the very north end, we, we have a nice sandy beach that we're trying to improve. It's like, why can't we fill that back in there and. We actually got a copy of his letter from the Corps of Engineers, his, his record of decision. Submitted that back in April, said, hey, can we get permission to, to fill in that same section that's in our property boundaries? And they said, wait, no, they, wait, and finally, uh, right around Thanksgiving, we finally got our. Letter of decision and so the last bit of, of the funds that we have will, um, let us fill that in. And establish, you know, the gravel parking lot for the beach. We didn't, if I have enough funds to. Asphalt that parking area as we had hoped. Of course, you know, funds construction wise go a little bit more, they don't go quite as far as I used to. Um, but we're gonna hope for more funding. Um, but right now, if you've driven by there, there are twenty-four campsites that have got a shade sheltered, concrete pad. Big table firing that we will plannably start. Using this, this summer and renting out, so. That'll, that'll be a big change from what we've had in the past. We've been closed camping for the last two summers and. We'll have some more. Now, I don't know if you've heard some of the long-term things, but. If we can get the full funding for Rainbow Cove. We will have, we drilled the well the same time we drilled the well at North Eden. So the well is drilled, but we will develop that water and distribute it throughout the area. We'll bring power in. And we're gonna develop a, what they call an advanced sewage management system. So basically we'll have a sewer system that can, you know, everything that's there goes through the system and the water that comes out is supposed to be drinkable. They, they, they put one of these in an Antelope Island when they built it, about a thirty-site campsite at Antelope Island. And they finished that, uh, about a year and a half ago. So that's, that's the plan. As a part of that, um.
Makes you wanna haul in your own.
The, the, the campground, each site in there will have a power and water connection like we did at North Eden. And then there's gonna be, the restrooms in the campground will have the flush toys and the showers. And then there will be three RV dump stations. Um, for that area. So basically anybody that camps from our South Eden campground to North Eden. When they're done, they can come and utilize the, um. Facilities before they leave, because right now we, we don't have anything.
Where's that dump gonna be?
Um, if you've seen it, so there's the main road that comes in that we got asphalt down to the launch ramp. Um, if your exit, there'll be one pull off to the right before you leave. So if somebody came in from another area, they could come in around the roundabout. And use that and then leave. And then there's gonna be two on the exit road that comes out of the campground. Kind of a two-sided thing, so the road chemistry will be one on each side of the road.
Is there a cost for that?
If they paid for their camping, there's no additional cost.
So if they come in on the roundabout though, um, and just, and, and camping somewhere else. So can they come in and dump there if they've camped in any of the campsites?
Any, any of our Utah ones, yes. Um, if you come in, you'll, you'll see, as you come in, we, we move the entrance a little bit to the north. And it comes in, makes a nice bend, and then there's gonna be, there's a flagpole there now, there's a new gate. And we've got a spot there that will build us entrance station, just like we had at North Eden. With, with some additional funds. And that'll be the new entrance and that's bef, that's well before the roundabout, so. That's where they would collect the fees or verify that they've paid and then they can down around.
Is it open for the public?
Right now, it's open to the launch ramp, yes.
Anybody come in and dump and use your?
They could, yeah. And if, you know, if they were into Idaho and they wanted to come dump, they just, we, we, they just pay a fee.
Okay.
And dump. Because, you know, again, parks, we, not for free. But we maintain that, but it'll be a unique facility, I think, and very beneficial. So if anybody asks me, or legislature, legislature asks me, we can get, if we'd get some funding to help finish that off, that would be great. So that's where we're going that way, so we can, we, we hope we have more money. Um, if we get it fully developed to where it's at, you know, I said there's twenty-four individual campsites. When it would be done, there'd be fifty-eight individual campsites and two group sites. And a, we'll have a lot, right now, we, we have more boat parking than we had before. But we've also got an area that's already been graded out for, that will double the size of. Parking available and. Two little areas to the south on the lake side that we, we could have tiny homes or. Like this company that's been doing the, um, we call Cozy Casitas, could possibly put something in there. Uh, across the road, if we get the full funding, we would actually try to provide. Or build two state housing units. One like a three-bedroom home and then like another unit would be like a duplex. But something that we really need, a lot of our parks are realizing that, hey, we're trying to attract people to work for us. Housing, especially in our community, affordable housing is not easy to find. Any questions about the, the, the projects?
Lot of big improvements.
Yes, I, I'm. You know, when, when we first started Rainbow Cove, when we grabbed about sixty acres, like, wow, it made it a huge, you know, opened up the area. And then I was amazed that, you know, I didn't read plans very well, I guess, but how much earth we moved to create that nice gentle slope. And the big roundabout to provide the access. I don't know if I'm gonna have to move so much dirt, but it, it looks good. Um, and it's, and unfortunately you're able to find Norm Meekum to take a lot of it off our hands. Uh, okay, some issues that are facing that you, you guys may be aware of is, um, last year's legislature passed a bill or statute. That created a new DNR Division of Law Enforcement. And that took effect January one. And so now basically, um, law enforcement that was done by Wildlife Resources. State parks, state lands, and then the Division of Recreation have all been pulled into one DNR law enforcement agency. And so three of my guys that, that worked for, for the park for many years decided that they were gonna go follow the law enforcement. So.
So that was up, that was their choice?
Yeah, that was their choice. They could have stayed with the park or they could have moved over. I. Um, chose to stay with the parks. They actually provided a little incentive for me, but. I, I've been a state park ranger for thirty-two years and I've liked, yeah, I don't have to be a law enforcement officer to make this work, so.
So are they hiring more just park rangers now? Seasons.
Right now, it's, it's kind of iffy because basically, you, you know, to me, I look at, I look at the, uh, the four agencies that are. Be, you know, law enforcement being pulled over, state parks is feeling the biggest impact.
Just losing rangers.
Losing full-time people. Now, the, the fellow that's the director of the DNR Law Enforcement. Comes from the troopers and he's like, man, he says, we could have a lot more efficient law enforcement officers, that's all they focused on. I don't disagree with that. But I also, what, what I don't think he looked at is there were times stuck when law enforcement is slow. When there's not a lot of boating going on, not a lot of off-highway vehicle or snowmobile stuff. And when the park's slow. That we had, we utilized these staff people to help with things in the park. We helped keep ready for summer, do some, some of the smaller projects. So we, we utilized them when things were slow very efficiently. But. And, you know, I was like, I, I can't disagree on the one side, because as a, as a law enforcement park manager. I maintained my training, but there's a lot of times was I the, the top of the, you know, the best that I could be, not because I had a lot of other. Things to be doing. But could I do my job as a law enforcement officer? Yes, but could I be the, the top dog or the best? Or more, or more specialized.
How will you, how are you guys gonna address that customer service side? You know, that non-law enforcement stuff?
I think, I think actually as we work through this, it's gonna be better off.
You're getting, it's just like Bill said, seasonal helpers or?
Well, we, we, we'll, we'll get the focus on park, you know, make, make sure the park it meets our, you know, our customer service, our facility care. And building the business. We'll have opportunities to provide more, if you wanna call it, interpretive educational programs.
Yeah, that's, that's my question. Well. Gonna fill those gaps.
Um, you, you know, I, I can do that. I'm working on trying to hire more long-term seasonals. And I feel fortunate right now because they pulled three away. They asked me for a plan of how, what, what, what I felt. The park would need staffing wise. I said, I need four full-time people now. And then that new marina comes online, I need a fifth. And they came back to me and said, well, you got two, which is me and my brothers and grounds guy. And then they said, then they came back and said, we'll give you the. Your, let you fill your assistant manager position. So yesterday we had that. We had interviews for that, so we're, I'm gonna have three full-time people, but I'm restructuring how we do our seasonal so that we can.
You had good candidates for that?
What's that?
You had good candidates apply for that?
Yeah. Yeah, and then, and, and they let us fill from in-house first. It was, we, we were ready to go out for a public recruitment and they said. Since we've got some changes going on within parks, let's let parks people try to do it, because not only Bear Lake's impacted, but.
Yeah.
Other, other parks with this change.
That probably helps, helps your housing issue too, if you're finding people that maybe already have.
If somebody's already here, yeah. So, um.
So you'll be looking for a fourth then?
Well, I'm hoping for a fourth, especially, you know, I'm, uh, my new region manager is, is on board. She's like, she was a park manager at, at Antelope Island and she's like. You know, I can't believe you can run this park. With their staff and, and the.
So on your operating budget. Did that include your three officers from before?
Yeah, that was the fiscal year when they were in.
So now removing them, do you imagine it'll be the same? Or are you gonna say?
Well, the, the hard part is, is this, this current fiscal year is basically gonna be the same, because. When they created this new division of law enforcement, they did not give really any money. To operate on, so. So basically, um, you know, like when we would do boating enforcement, the Division of Recreation would reimburse us. When we would do off-highway vehicles enforcement, safety. The Division of Recreation would reimburse us. So it's kinda like if someone, they were in Salt Lake County and working with UPD and. They say, hey, your town doesn't have a law enforcement presence or it's on law enforcement. Agency, but UPD can provide it to you for a fee. So right now.
You're paying the fee.
We're paying. The Division of Law Enforcement to do law enforcement in the park. That's, that's the basic.
And that will be, this, they'll be doing that this summer.
Yeah, so, so right now, even though the, the, the three guys have been su, um, moved over to the new Division of Law Enforcement as of January one.
You're gonna have a worse fiscal year.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be a little bit worse, because right now they're still gonna be paid for. Through my part.
Legislature says otherwise. Daniel Aaron.
What's that? Daniel Aaron and Justin.
So you'll be covering them plus you.
Plus I, plus I have a new, I have a new assistant.
Maybe.
Uh, but yeah, that was the, that was the kinda the bad part. Legislature set up a new division, but didn't provide the funding to. Let them just start on their own.
They're kinda famous for that, actually.
So, um, but I think as we, especially as we, as we roll past that, I think now that we'll have. That profit margin. That profit margin after this current fiscal year, I'll tell you. But that's just kind of annoying thing, but that's, that's not a big thing. I still think the statewide state parks is gonna feel the biggest impact. Um, but I do think that as we roll into this, it's gonna take a couple of years, as we roll out of it. We'll be in a better shape, we'll be providing more customer service, like more interpretive programs. That we, that we haven't been able to provide, at least what I see from my park standpoint. So next on that list of issues is the the loss of the full time positions, and then I'm hoping that I can get them back. I'd love to have actually five full time positions. So that's really what this park can do, and help keep it maintained, and with the new marina coming online, what we've got to do to run that.
You think they'll do that once the new marina is out?
I hope so, I am.
They see some of those moments coming in.
You know, it's kind of hard, because we opened up North Eden. And it's got thirty five campsites, a group site, a camp host site, it's got a hundred and twenty vehicles that for parking for the day use beach. You got, you got a nice little maintenance building, and then I compare it to Hiram State Park. Hiram State Park has like thirty two campsites, has a couple of cabins, has one group site, has a day use beach, that doesn't have parking for a hundred and twenty. Yeah, right now, they have two full time people to run that state park, and I've got three to run the park that's. Much bigger.
So when you have an incident in your park. You probably won't have somebody there as quick and handy as you had in the past.
You may not, no, 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 the, the, the.
Coming from somewhere else.
The the umbilical cord that we've had is tied because we've had the direct law enforcement. There's probably gonna be a little bit of.
See that being kind of an issue.
You know, there's been times that if there was one was on, hey, I'm on the boat, something happens on land, you know, we've, we've had that delay, but. These, these guys with the, the, the new division of law enforcement. They will do boating stuff, they will do off highway vehicle stuff, because they're, they're gonna get funding from. Rec, out of recreation for that. They'll do park stuff, you know, park needs. Will they be spending as much time in the park as they did as a, as a. Park ranger? Probably not. Uh, but they're responsive to a law enforcement issue, there might be a deputy closer than a. All these new, you know, new DNR law enforcement officers, they could be up in the hills.
Yeah, your guy will be up on Temple Flat.
Maybe he might be up on the hills, they might be out on the boat.
You'll have to have the deputies going in there.
So, yeah, it's, it's gonna be something that's gonna be worked through all the way around. At least we're not quite like Bear Lake County, and the state parks in Idaho. Their rangers could have, what you know, would have called a category two or a special function officer. Like Andy Starks, he could write infraction type violations. I won't, I, I, I don't have that ability. But he doesn't, he's, he's not a full fledged peace officer, so Bear Lake County Sheriff's Office actually provides law enforcement. In his park, so we should have it better, um, overall, they, they just, the, the, the area here. Uh, there's, right now, there's three rangers assigned to Rich County. And one to Cache, and then there's a sergeant over top of. The, the four of them, so there's five people, law enforcement wise, where it used to be six. So there's, there's a loss of one officer in, in between the two counties, what state parks used to have. But in the long run, we may have more full time positions in, in the county, which would be beneficial for the county. Like, I still, I'm still gonna push to get my park back up to five full time. Positions. Anyway, all right. Um, still, some things at the park, you know, there's a number of days and times that the, we reached capacity. Uh, rendezvous, we did that probably around six or seven Saturdays. And I thought that we might see back up onto the highway like we did in the COVID summers, didn't quite get that. To that point, but we had, we, we had days when we were shut down, so our, our day use of rendezvous was full. We had filled the main parking, the first overflow, the second overflow, and we kind of created a third one, and once we get that, it's like. We had no more room at the end. So that's still, that's still an issue. We're hoping that with some of the things we did, we did at, uh, North Eden, the Rainbow Cove, it will help. Give some opportunity to people to go to the peace site. And people that came to North Eden, when we opened it up, they were amazed, we didn't, we didn't know you had this. You know, it's been here, but we just made decent improvements and. And people said, this is the first time I've been here, and I'm gonna come back. All right, then, I mentioned about the affordable housing for our full time and seasonal employees. We've, parks got two tiny homes. It's kind of like a dorm, we can, we can house four of each, you know, each gender in each one. They're at rendezvous beach.
Been down in the back.
Yeah, in the back by our, our maintenance building and water tank, so. Several years ago, we created three RV pads. Thinking that we could use them for simple RVs, but we took two of them and just put the tiny home, one tiny home on each one. And we still have the third one in the middle.
Real quick, how many seasonal employees do you typically have in the summer?
Um, paid employees were around twenty. Twenty additional ones that we hire. And then we have seven camp host couples.
Where do those, where do those twenty employees usually stay besides the tiny homes?
Well, so, some of them live around here.
It's from home.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I remember, I worked there, okay.
Uh, and, you know, some of them come from home, other places, um, you know, we, we've had. Brother, sister that came to us from the COVID area, drove down. We had one young lady from Randolph for a while, so. But that's just, and then, then we get some from like Logan, we had one, uh, one young lady, we're trying to get her to come back, but she was, went to school at Cedar, at SUU and. She stayed in the housing. Uh, we did get, two, two years ago, we had delivered a tiny house that's intended for lodging in the park, kind of like a, a suite in the park. Um, we, we had it there, we finally got the. Connections, you know, the utility connections put in place to actually utilize it in the fall. Uh, one last thing before we can actually do the public, because it's the only one we have, we have to make it ADA accessible, so we've gotta get a ramp up to it. We did create a second one, because they promised us that we'd have a second opportunity, but we're also weighing that, like, if we need it for housing, we may. We may have to utilize it for employee housing rather than. That, anyway, so, uh, the marina, um. You know, the capacity to launch and retrieve boats is an issue, the parking capacity, with the new marina online, well, we should be addressing some of that. That we shouldn't have a huge issue. Part of what we learned as the process of designing the new marina, they asked us how long it would take to. Launch, how long it takes to launch a boat, how long it takes to retrieve a boat. And what we were saying, from what I seen is. We had bigger backups in the late afternoon, and in the evening, or when we had the big storms, people retrieving their boats. But we, we timed some people, so people came to our, our boat prep lane, had their boat ready, ready, ready to launch. When they leave the prep lane, back down, and when they came out, what do you think it took? How many minutes?
You told me before, but I can't remember.
About five minutes, five to six minutes per boat to, to launch. Now, when we did the timing of when they came to retrieve, so they're in the prep lane. They, they pull forward, they back down, and then, for, when they're off the launch ramp, what do you think we're looking at?
A lot longer.
Twelve to fifteen minutes per boat. So that's why our biggest bottleneck has been the ability to retrieve. With the new marina, we will have, the current launch ramp is seven, ten foot wide launch ramp, of launch ramp lanes. The new marina is basically designed with ten, twelve foot wide launch ramp lanes. So we're actually over doubling the capacity. Of our current marina, so that should be good. We still have a need, I'm, I'm trying to pursue factors through the. Division of Recreation, but if you've seen our current launch ramp, it's holding together, but it has major cracks. And, and it, it's, you know, the, the five oldest lanes that were bu- poured in nineteen sixties. Are in need of replacement. But that's, trying to use motorboat access grants and other, other funding sources for that, but I haven't had, been anything successful on that one. Uh, rendezvous beach, of course, we have our day use parking capacity, I'm trying to get an additional day use restroom. And the chance that we could actually improve a little bit, provide a little more camping by re, re renovating or redoing the cottonwood campground. Uh, we, we talked about this before, it was back last spring, um, the. There's a culvert that goes under the, under the, under Cisco Road at first point. Uh, it was creating issues, there's, there's water taking down from that little canyon. Come out of the road, it would, a lot, a lot of mud and debris, uh, flow onto the park park. Uh, but this, early this fall, that culvert got filled, uh, and. Who's your builders, who's, who's your grows guy? Brandon? We've been trying to meet with him, because it's concerned to him, because now if it comes down, it forces it to the north. There's another culvert to the north, and basically, the one that goes right under the road on, on the curve at first point, has been blocked off. By debris filling it up. Better for us.
When did that happen?
Well, one of the rainstorms we had this early this fall.
Okay, so it's only just been recently then?
Yeah, okay. Brendan's aware of it, but we, we need to get on site and do something to help. Benefit the road and us, so find something that works good.
It's one of those things that gets forgotten about until it rains.
It rains again, and then, then mud starts coming across the road, or gets pushed to a different point, um. First point, we had a couple of days, this, a couple of Saturdays of suffering that. We hadn't seen that many people try to park their vehicle and boat today, they, they was. They got packed, and we still gotta try to address that somehow, and. And between the county deputies and our guys, trying to keep them from parking on the bike path. Is a little bit of an issue.
Yeah, it is the perfect parking.
Easy way to afford to pull off and do it. Um, and then, of course, we're always concerned with DWR on our AIS interdiction efforts, that they're a sister agency to us, and. We want to make sure that we keep, keep those things out, which kind of relates back, I didn't quite talk about it, but. Um, at the marina, with our construction project going on. We kind of had it designed, hey, this is what we really like, okay, guys, that's a little bit too much, tighten the belts, we tightened it down. Uh, when, when they did that, it took away what I call the multi DNR administrative building. We needed about four point five million to do it, but it would create a billing for DNR. To let, to let the, well, wildlife biologist have a spot, an office. Because right now, she's using a trailer that's from the nineteen seventies up our, our thing, and it's getting old. She could use a, at least administrative office, state lands could use something.
You didn't do away with the. Invasive species tank though, or clean out, did you, or did you? Wasn't you gonna have a?
Well, no, that's, that, that's an issue that we've been trying to put in, trying to work with wildlife, this is where, um, but we've been told. Right now, we've, we've designed it with an area that's large enough to put an AIS dip tank in there, because what makes sense? If we're gonna build a state of the art marina, why not have the newest in the AIS stuff? Uh, Willard Bay got a tank, Utah Lakes got a tank, San Hall's got a tank. A dip tank, um, I went over to Flaming Gorge, and they've, they've got dip tanks down here, they, they got dip tanks at the.
What is a dip tank?
So basically, a dip tank is. A place where you can back your boat down, and keep it on the trailer, then you hop in your boat, and you start it up, and you, and you run the heated. And treated water through your, your boat and your engine, and so basically, if there's any muscles. Present between the filtration, the water temperature, it kills them. It takes about seven to ten minutes per boat. If we have to do a decon, which means we have our pressurized unit. It takes about thirty five to forty minutes per boat to do one decon where a dip tank.
Yeah, I think that'd be very important to have.
Wildlife has said, Bear Lake's not high enough on our list for the funding, we're not gonna provide the funding, like, we still design it in there. A space for it, and it'll have, the utilities will be there, but it's like. If it costs a million dollars to build one, well, just get us the tank. Get us the tank and, and the filtration system, we'll get it put in as a part of the project, but wildlife right now is not. Saying Bear Lake's so high enough on the.
That's crazy.
But anything, I, I think you guys might need to help push that along. We had a legislative retreat in July, where, um, Chris Wilson came up, he started asking some questions about it. There's support for it.
Yeah, he was, he was all for it.
But we've just gotta get wildlife to, to say, hey, it's, Bear Lake needs it. To me, it makes sense, when wildlife studies show that about eighty percent of the boats that come to Bear Lake, they launch at the marina. Isn't that the best place to have it? Wildlife guys are saying, no, we, we, we don't wanna put it at the marina, it'll just cramp things up, and we need to find another location, but if. Majority of the boats are launching from the marina, still makes sense. So for those of us on, on the design side, we, we felt it was important that we got an area larger to put one in.
Where would that be?
I wish, if I would have brought a drawing of it, but it'll be on the, on the, on, on the new side, so. If you can imagine right now where our current exit is. So where the fish cleaning station is, is where, where the new entrance station would be put in. And from the entrance station, you would go forth, north a little bit, and then, then there's an oval, it would be an oval roundabout. So if you come around the roundabout, if you turn right, you come in, in, to utilize the, the current marina. If you go around to the left, you go to the new marina, so then, right in the left side of it, would be an area large enough for the dip tank to be.
So in between the two?
So basically, in between the two, but a bit more on the, on the new side.
New side, okay. And I guess the reason I asked you that question, so if you, that's really not gonna. Interrupt the flow of boats coming to launch.
No, because basically, what they would do is, if they need to go to, to, to the dip tank, they continue around. And then pull forward and back in, and if, if you don't need to use a dip tank, you wouldn't make that last little turn, you just head towards the, the.
Neither new or the old one.
So, uh, we, we've actually had a lot of thought in the, in the, into the design of it, but.
What, what, what's the cost?
That's the hard part we're trying to get, we've heard prices of about a million dollars, that's to buy it and have it installed.
Well, so, I mean, you've got them in San Hollow, you've got them in, in.
Utah Lake, Willard Bay. I think Jordan L's getting one.
Yeah, so, I mean, those figures ought to be. I mean.
But, 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 but we've asked wildlife for the actual costs and. To us, it's like, hey, just buy the dip tank and the filtration unit, get it there, we'll find a way to. So. Put it in as part of the project.
So once, once you do that, where's the water, where does the water go that, as you? So it's a circulating system, I'm sure.
Yeah, it's, it's got filters and circulates.
So it's a, a contained system, so what filters the. Any invasive species out of the water, is that built into the filter?
Into the filtration system, and then.
And, and the heat of it would kill them anyway. So does that cause an issue when boats back down in there, and they're pulling that hot, hot water through their boats? Does that cause an issue of overheating?
Um, no, I, I, I've been involved with the AIS, this, this has started many years ago. And he talked about different chemicals, but if they keep the water temperature at about a hundred and forty degrees. Not, not like a hundred and eighty, a hundred and forty is hot enough.
It'll do it.
To, to kill them, um, but it's not hot enough to damage.
Yeah, I mean, you can run it, you know, run to two hundred, two hundred and twelve.
Yeah.
Damage, so I just wondered what.
And then, you know, and then the, the system would be, when, you know, because pretty likely, you have to dr- to drain the water, you would go into this sewer system and not. Drain to the lake.
I think that was his question, where the water is gonna end up?
You, you know, it was, here, here's the other thing too, is, is if you were to. Treat the, treat it, but then it kills the, the, the villagers, and you drain it to the lake, and wildlife does their test, you could get a false positive. Because you'd have the DNA samples that would say, hey, there's villagers here, but they can't tell if they're alive or dead in that sampling. Here, right, by taking it, make sure it doesn't drain to the lake, you, you, you don't have that possibility. But, it, um, the thing that I, I identified, in, when we had to tighten the belt even tighter, is. We had it designed so that there would be a, the current office has a restroom on it, they build a new restroom on the north end, but. Just off to the marina side of, of the roundabout, would be the, the administrative. Uh, the new administration building and a restroom building. That restroom building got cut as a part of the. And that to me is, I, that restroom needs to be put in.
Well, you had one out there. Well, you had one out there on its side for, I don't know how
That wasn't quite built, yeah, that was, uh, that was for our, our Rainbow Cove project and you know, another twenty miles, he would have made it. Um, but apparently, be- between the shipping, the shipping company and the insurance company for the, the trucking company, I they finally made a deal, and I, the, I saw a video thing, Diesel Brothers came up, loaded it up and took it down to the Garden City. And Garden City's gonna turn it into a, a flush restroom building, but pre-stop building.
Yeah.
Those, those CXTs are built pretty tough, so. But the, the, the restaurants we, we, we're having designed can have, they're, they're larger, much larger than just a two, a two-hole restroom, cause uh, these restaurants would have five stalls on each side, so.
Well, it's pretty tough to have a big administration building with no restrooms.
Well, we, we won't have the administration building, it, it got cut first thing.
The whole building?
Yeah.
Oh.
But we had it designed, so the restroom building would be a part of that, but it's funny, it got cut. We could build the restroom building, and then later on, we could build the building to attach it, but first round, we just cut the building, second round, cut the restroom part. It was like, if we're gonna build three hundred and fifty more slips, attract more people here, we can't have the same number of restrooms that we currently have, we need that third restroom.
Well, you don't need administration building, cause they're just gonna keep pushing your, pulling your people, putting them other places.
But, anyway, that's, that's, that's our report, if you have any more questions or such.
Appreciate it, thank you for coming. Yeah, thanks for those updates, um, as we have some discussions as the legislature, legislations come out. We know there's gotta be some more funding, we know we're, we're between five and ten million short.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, you know, we need to have some discussions about this dip tank, that it probably ought to be just implemented.
I, that's, that's my feeling.
I do too.
I, I'm telling you, cause we're building a pretty nice marina.
Why wouldn't you do it?
Why, why don't you put a state-of-the-art
Yeah.
dip tank for AIS there, that's, that's my question.
How much money have you spent on, like, up on Lake Town Hill, that, all that asphalt and that pull-off and all that, and you only man, they only man it.
Yeah. The, the A, the AIS program is
It's struggling.
By wildlife, it's, it's administered by wildlife, but they're, they're, they're DNR agencies, so they're sister agents to us, we support them because we have the access points, we, you know, we, we do the training and stuff, but, yeah, how much money did they spend putting asphalt in up on the top of thirty there?
Well, and, you know, for the amount of time that it was manned, it was not, you know, I mean, it was
You know, they, they, they can still do their check stations, but having a dip tank shortens that time for a decon.
Well, I
They, they wouldn't have to haul water up to the summit even to do them up there.
Well, as long as those people were going to the marina to launch anyway, you know, you would catch them and
Well, and, and there'd be a way to tag, tag the boat, saying, hey, you, you need to decon, you need to go to the marina before you launch.
Right.
And work with law enforcement that way and, you know, it just makes sense to me to have the place where, where most people launch the boats ought to be the place that you have you know, the contamination point.
Started this whole thing out, that was where you did the decons anyway, it was at the marina, but, you know, it just caused such a traffic jam that you know, there had to be others points, so, and, and we were missing, you know, boats going to other places, but
Well, we, we'll miss a few, I mean, Bear Lake's one, one of the unique places where the, the state doesn't control all of the access points, yet we have five launch ramps, but a little private land over there. People could, you know, launch their own, launch their own and
With the water being down like it's been over the years, those those aren't nearly as, there isn't nearly as many of those that are being used as there is at the marinas, you know, on the beach and out, out of the marinas.
So, it's kind of my observation, I think less people, especially what we're seeing over at First Point, less people are using tractors to launch their boats, and they're trying to use the, the state provided assets.
What I'm saying, yeah, yeah. Yeah, there's not near as many tractors around.
That's, that's why, that's why I think we, we need to try to address something at First Point.
Well, you have all the, uh, all the things they need there. If they build it somewhere else, it, it'd cost twice as much as it, it'd cost to build there.
That's why I think, that's why, me, I haven't he- heard wildlife give us numbers, but I'm like, if it costs a million dollars to buy it and put it in, is it five, six hundred thousand dollars to buy the unit and put it, and then we'll find a way to end the project to put it in, because
Well, no matter where else they could have, they would have to acquire land, they would have to
It would cost them more than it would to put it in our current location.
Yeah, they'd do it cheaper and
So, I mean, what, wildlife's a sister agency to us, we work together, but any, any, any input you guys might be able to find out and provide some support for would be helpful.
Well, we'll, we'll corner Joel and, uh, Joel Ferry and ask him what's going on.
Joel, I mean, Chris Wilson's been a supporter of, of this marina expansion and
Yeah.
And, uh, we'll see what happens with, uh, whoever Kira Berkland's replacement is.
Yeah. Alrighty, alright, thank you, thanks again. You're awesome, thank you for coming on our trip.
Thank you guys for
Thanks.
For the park, it's, it's a you know, I'm, I'm a state delegate and getting phone calls and such, and I ask questions, it's like and one of them is, what, what'd you take on state parks? Because in this county, we have a state park that's very beneficial for the county.
Yeah.
I also asked him about water, you know, my, I have a fear of water. Of, they, they're trying to protect the Great South Lake so much, but what's the biggest tributary to the Great South Lake? The Bear River and Bear Lake is on that.
They don't know much about art.
You know, water's important to Bear Lake and all of us that live up here.
They know very little about Rich County in general.
Anyway, thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you. All of them. Do I have a motion on expenditures?
I'll make a motion to approve December's expenditures.
Second. Moving second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, I would make a motion that we approve the April twenty twenty-four minutes. The August seventh twenty twenty-four minutes, the October second twenty twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-four minutes. And the November sixth twenty twenty-four minutes.
Uh, it's taken that.
Moving second, we approve April, August, October, November minutes, all in favor, say aye.
Alright.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So is there an issue with our February commission meeting?
It's the same day as your
On the hill, Capitol on the hill. That's right, okay. Um, those are pretty important days, I, we probably ought to do something different.
Yeah.
Either move it to Tuesday or move it to Thursday, preferably Tuesday.
Preferably what?
Preferably to Tuesday, if we were gonna move it a day in one way or the other, or go to the next week.
Tuesdays are court. Right.
Court day.
Of the first, the first Tuesday of the month?
Yeah, Justice Court.
So we need to go up to twelfth? Yeah, cause I think that Thursday would probably be legislative meetings.
Yep. Okay, well, I would suggest then that we move commission meeting to February twelfth.
Okay.
Party. I'd do that, harsh form of a motion, since it's outside of our regular schedule.
Second.
Moving second, we move it to the second Wednesday, all in favor, say aye.
Okay.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Would you entertain a motion to be dead?
I would.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Move, take the adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Alright.
Any opposed? Nobody ever opposes that.